All right. Good evening and welcome to the June 2 Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I am your Chairman, Christopher Gerber. I ask that everybody please write. That's new.
And that happened at the village board meeting too.
It must have been something they just put in. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. They probably got yelled at by some lawyer that they didn't make it known well enough that meetings were being recorded. So they had to add that little audio blurb in there.
That's my guess as well, Chris.
All right. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for Hartman Hudson Point ARB. Public hearing for ARB review of a proposed addition to an existing single family dwelling. Said properties located nine Hudson Point and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps to section 225, block one lot two. This was noticed in wow, on the Friday, May 28, 2021, in the Times Town Record, if I remember correctly. Yes, okay. Jonathan, I know you had some comments on the application. So why don't we start with you before we go to the public? So we can get any questions from the board members and that out of the way.
Okay, you should have a memorandum from Nelson Pope Voorhis on dated May 27. The we found that the roof shingles were Harvard slate and the siding natural clay, which appears to meet the the standards for natural color. The house will be visible from designated ridge preservation view corridors. And we need for you to determine whether it is blending into the hillside to the maximum practical extent. The applicant added a note that windows will be non glare. And we just specified they should should put on anti reflection window film to be applied with twenty windows with subtly exposure. They have labeled the plan now to say that no vegetation is to be removed. It's only the additions only going into the the lawn areas. The project is subject to architectural review. And the applicant has provided photos and floor plans for comparable homes in the neighborhood around the subject property. And I think it's going to make it very easy for you to look at those and determine, make your determination whether it's it fits in and is not excessively similar or dissimilar to the comparable homes. The bulk requirements. We asked that the application page be corrected to mention that the properties in conservation cluster development overlay as well as R1A. And we'd like to see the building square footage labels on the of how much the existing dwelling, the size of it. The information is on this square footage schedule, but we'd like to see it on the site plan as well. They've added existing and proposed lot coverage, the site plan. And it appears to be met. The building height, it just says less than thirty five feet. The requirement is thirty five feet and we'd like to see an exact measurement according to the definition in the code of the height. So if it's thirty one feet or thirty three feet, that should be shown. The projected water and sewer demand. We just want to confirm that these the uses are not going to demand any water or sewer. The great room does show seating for twenty six persons and we're still thinking that perhaps maybe this could the the issue of how this is to be used and whether it's ever going to be used for assemblies as opposed to just an accessory use to the home for guests and residents of the home. If it were to be used, it would need to meet fire and building codes for that use. And perhaps this could be handled by a note on the plan, but I'll leave Attorney Golden to continue on with that discussion. If it's determined to be for residential use, it's a type two under seeker. And we don't believe it needs a GML review. Those that's the summary of our report of May 27.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody from the planning board have questions for Jonathan?
I do.
Go ahead Sandy.
Um Jonathan, okay, you have said that the this addition is thirteen hundred square feet. But on what we were given. And you know this. The plans and everything on the last page under the square footage comparison. Under for nine Hudson Point under proposed for the basement, it has that it's twenty two hundred and forty eight square feet. So where are we getting thirteen hundred from?
Um, I think that might be a typographical error because I know that it's more than thirteen hundred just from memory. I apologize for that. Where is that? Where did I type that? Which number comment?
Um. When you talked about.
Oh, what I said was forty four by thirty.
Right.
That's the that's the like the that's a footprint area.
But if that's.
Even that isn't right.
Yeah, that's a book.
Well, what? No, wait a second. I was just, I I see what I did. When I wrote that, I apologize. I was just saying that the great room itself without including the warming kitchen and the study or the basement or the or the seating area upstairs, just the great room itself was forty four by thirty. And and I see that I wrote the addition is for a great room roughly forty four by thirty feet with two galleries sitting here is above. So I was calling out that just the great room was that size.
Okay.
And I understand the way I phrased the sentence, how you could have gotten drawn off track and I apologize for the way I worded.
I was missing the math someplace.
No, no, it's just has to do with, I think those are called appositives. My English teacher taught me in ninth grade and I did them wrong.
Do you have a total square footage for the all of the additions?
The total square footage, according to the architect is two thousand two hundred forty eight for the unfinished basement. And if it has headroom, it it counts just because it's unfinished doesn't mean it's not there. You've heard me state that before. And the first floor is two thousand two hundred forty eight above. And then the second floor above that sort of the gallery above is seven hundred twenty nine. So that's roughly forty five hundred fifty two twenty nine square feet on those three levels.
So then if we add that to the existing sixty eight eighty six, we're talking about over twelve thousand square feet.
Yes. Because the existing house is twenty four thirty seven in the basement, twenty two forty six on the first floor with in the garage and patio. If if it's covered, you have to count it. So you count patio, the garage, existing first floor is about three thousand five and a half, six and a half. It's about six and a half thousand square feet in the existing house, just roughly adding on the fly here. Plus the additions as we've just discussed. So it's 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 the houses is is going to be quite large when it's done. So in the comparisons, you have been given on sheet A one oh two. Other Free Patterson Pass, you can see all the levels there. On sheet A one oh three, you can see the two levels at seven Allegheny Cross. And if you look at the last page of the submittal on page eleven, you can see the you can see those figures done by the architect. Which are pretty much the same as what we've just discussed, adding them on the fly, which is existing nine Hudson Point is six thousand eight eighty six and proposed proposed is five thousand two twenty five. So you put that together. And you get that eleven thousand, about twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand one one one. Okay.
So it's twenty seven percent bigger than the largest one that's on seven Allegheny Cross, Allegheny Cross then.
Right, and which is nine thousand ninety three and Free Patterson Pass is eight thousand one hundred nine. And you know, I'm glad that that the applicant's architects given us this table because we can compare likes to likes.
Yeah. You have any other questions, Sandy?
Um. So the the basement in the existing house, is that unfinished right now or that's finished?
Me?
Yeah. That. The answer.
Mr. Hartman, do you know off the top of your head, is the basement finished?
I believe it's not. I can't be sure. I wasn't I wasn't the actual house just where it meets the existing. And I know the basement do not does not connect to the existing. But I believe it's not.
And and there's plans for a basement pool at some point.
Some point. So yeah, that they're basically lowering the foundation. So if they ever want to put a pool, they don't have to under. Because basically the basement, if you take a look at the sheet at the 3D rendering, it's completely underground, which means the first floor is technically walk in from the front and from the back. If you take a look at page five of my booklet, it goes the the topography goes even up a little bit. So which means it's totally, totally underground, without even the possibility of having a window or even a window well, because even the thickness of the floor is covered. It's like walk in the first floor is walk in from all three sides. So the only if they ever want to use the basement can be used for something that doesn't require windows like a pool or something like that. And regarding, first of all, just to answer the question, regarding the height of the building, I did put it on the plan. I don't know that how I put it on the plan on sheet. Page eight. It says it's twenty seven eleven and a half, which is a little bit lower than the which is a little bit lower than the existing garage.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I see. I see now that the dimensions in the little cloud. I missed that on sheet eight two zero one.
Yeah. So a little bit of the even, I mean, not as high as the not even the higher roof, but as the roof of the existing garage. So it could kind of blend in. Um, regarding the square footage, regarding the square footage is, yeah, it is a little bit bigger and that's because of the among this unfinished basement, which in a way doesn't really matter. It's completely underground. I mean, I can remove it if it's that it's going to make the difference. It's going to be the same square footage with Free Patterson, but from the outside, nobody's going to notice if it has a basement, if it doesn't. Because as I said, it's the first floor is walking from the front and from the back. So that's why it is a little bit bigger on the square footage. If he is building already, you might as well have a basement, which you can eventually make a pool. That's why it's a little it's bigger than the typical house over there.
Mr. Hartman, could you explain on sheet A two zero one? Where you just pointed me pointed out to me that you showed a height of twenty seven eleven and a half inches. That is the height of the front of the of the addition measured to the like the slab that's even with the bottom of the garage door.
Yeah.
But then you show, is that the dotted lines with the windows below that line that go that are another look to be about twelve, twelve feet below that line? What what does that represent? Those dotted lines and there's windows that are marked thirty seven fifty seven and thirty seven fifty seven. So basically underneath in dotted lines.
That's that's totally the basement. So the the dark line is the grate.
Okay.
So it's twenty seven feet eleven and a half above grate. So that dashed line is the basement, which is completely underground, which means if you take a look, that's the top of double plate. And then there's the thickness of the floor.
Right.
There's the level. So it's even the thickness of the floor is covered completely and that's on the front.
And those two those then that are below grade are 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 you you've signified them as dotted because those are facing the back, right?
No, it signifies as dotted because you won't be able to see it because it's on the ground.
But I just don't understand why there's two windows below grade.
Ah, so yeah, so the other day they did put in the front to bring a little bit, they put in window wells. That represents deep, deep window wells.
Oh, I see. So those are the windows inside window wells that are on the front. There'll be two window wells in front of those two upper story up. The main floor is two windows and then there'd be wells below them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was not understanding.
So Mr. Hartman, two questions for you. You said the old basement and the new basement won't be connected?
No.
Okay. And it's a twelve foot ceiling in the basement?
No, ten.
Ten, okay. I thought you said twelve for some reason. I was like, I think I'm putting a diving board in. Sandy, you have any other questions?
No, that's that's all. Thank you.
Rob?
The color, it's vinyl, right? The addition?
Yeah, it's going to be this vinyl and stone similar, not similar, the exact same as the existing.
Now, what color is that exactly? I think we talked about that last time.
Yeah, I had it on the application. I'll take a look at it in one second. On the original application, you have put it in.
Natural clay.
Yeah. So exterior wall is vinyl, natural clay, yeah. So the picture is an actual picture of the existing. So and the 3D rendering is added on top of existing. So whatever you see on the on that page, what is it? Page five?
Five.
That's the actual color. It's not by computer. It's it's an actual picture.
It looks like sort of a beige color. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And no plans for any landscape buffering between the two properties?
Um. We have the, let me see, it's about six and a half feet in between the two. Um, as I'm worrying me by buffering, I mean, as far as vegetation or things like that.
Yeah, trees, shrubs, plants.
Um, as of now, there's nothing. As you can see in the actual picture.
Yeah, the aerial, the aerial looks bare.
Yeah. And also page five, you can see that's the actual picture. So it has now grass. And we were planning of doing additional whatever they have right now. So we're not removing anything, but we didn't propose anything. But if the board suggests, we can even, we can always put that in. And I'm sure the client will have no problem.
Rick, did you mention that the the president said if we approve the the vinyl and ridge preservation?
Yes, I mean, you have a situation here in which and and other applications now in which there were approvals gotten for certain buildings, whether that was in the original authorization by the planning board or it changed in afterwards. And at a certain point in time, as you're all aware, this planning board didn't receive applications that changed with respect to ARB. Those were given out simply as building permits. And so they may have gotten a building permit for a change in the siding. I don't know that on any of these applications. I haven't done that research. But assuming that the existing building has received an approval with respect to those materials, you now have this sort of an important pinch point where they're proposing an addition. And the addition doesn't comply with the requirements in your code. And so you need to decide whether or not you're going to take this strict construction and say, well, it's not in accordance with the code because it has to be of natural materials, which does not include vinyl. And if you do, then the applicant need to go to the ZBA and ask for relief from that provision. And they will be judging that in a different standard than you're judging it as to their five part test of whether or not they meet an area variance. And they might be able to receive a variance that would allow this. The other option is that you've had prior discussions concerning these applications, talking about the fact, well, it's it's simply an addition. And whether or not and it you're now going to require these wood, stone, or I forgot the third one is brick, wood, stone or brick to be placed on an addition in juxtaposition to say vinyl siding that they had that was approved. And but if my cautionary note to you is that if you do that, if you say, well, this is just an addition to an approved siding. And so we're going to, in a sense, make our review of this and waiver generally to allow this to happen. And I'm not saying that that's something you should or shouldn't do, but if you do that, you will be setting a precedent. And so if you set the precedent that not generally that you can have vinyl, but on buildings that properly had achieved vinyl and now they're having a an addition that if you would allow that to be to match the existing as most additions do, that's something that you have to follow going forward, that you're going to be doing that. Another wrinkle in that is that may make a lot of sense. It's a you know, eight eight hundred foot addition that won't make a big difference. Or whether or not it's basically they not, I'm not saying this application, but they triple the size of their structure. And therefore, in a sense, it may make sense to require somebody to redo everything or have this odd mixture of natural and and not natural. But as long as you're deviating from the strict construction of the code, then that's going to be considered a precedent. Your alternative is to say, this is what the code requires and we're going to require it. And so if you want a variance, that's the process to vary from the code.
Thank you.
Hey, Rob?
No, not now.
Okay. Why don't we, does anybody else have any questions for our consultants? No, otherwise I go go ahead Sandy.
Actually, because I just had one thing and I'm sorry, it was a housekeeping thing on the projected water and sewer demand for connection to municipal system. Um, the lot I think is incorrect. It says the lot is lot one, and I think it's lot two, correct?
You're talking about the SBL number?
Yeah, the SBL is lot two.
It's two five five dash one dash two.
Okay, so that just needs to be corrected because it's it's showing as one, one dash one.
Easy fix. All right. So is the boards okay? I'm going to go out for a public comment right now. We kind of everybody mulls everything over in their head. Okay. All right. Right now we are soliciting public comment on this application. This is for the nine, sorry, a bunch of ARBs in front of me tonight, nine Hudson Point. So if there is a member of the public that would like to speak out on nine Hudson Point, I ask that you please state your full name and where you live prior to making your comments. Please be respectful in your comments, direct your comments directly to the virtual board and we will do the best to answer comments as they come up. So with that said, anybody wishing to speak on the nine Hudson Point ARB application? You have the ability to unmute yourself. This is the only only thing I miss about in person meetings. Nine Hudson Point ARB. Final call for public comment on the nine Hudson Point ARB application. With that said, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So board, it's up to us now. I think the applicant has pretty much given us everything we've asked for, right? Why would it as far as information we've required? We had no input from the public. We've had advice of counsel. God bless you. Um. What's everybody? What's everybody's feeling? I will say right off the bat, that twenty seven percent, and I think this is something we wrestled with with actually, I believe it was your was your home, Mr. Hartman, when you were before us some time ago. Um. We just seem to keep going bigger and bigger and bigger.
I thought that we had come up with a percentage. Um, maybe it was on the Apple Hill. Last Apple Hill home. Um.
Yeah, I think that's.
That we I thought we came to a an agreement on something that maximum that we didn't want to go over. And I thought it for some reason, I thought it was like nine percent or something or 10%, nothing more than that. Eight or nine percent, I thought it was. I don't, do you remember that Natalie?
I do remember. I'm trying to pull up our last memo on that application to see if I had it listed. I thought it for some reason, I thought it was between fifteen and eighteen, but I could be wrong.
Oh, I know. Okay.
And also that would have been in the context of a review of a subdivision and what the homes in the subdivision could do. And so there was sort of a basis to say, well, here's a subdivision, we're going to require the subdivision to have a certain look and feel. We didn't have that with respect to the subdivision that I know of. And now you're faced with individual applications.
Right, but I thought that came into play when it was excessively different or excessively similar.
If, well, I think you certainly can go ahead and say that a certain size in juxtaposition to the surrounding homes is sufficiently dissimilar. I don't think you have to have it as a percentage, but you could make that determination. The the more difficult question is is that if that twenty seven percent is not visual to the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, the surrounding homes in that neighborhood, for instance, if they everything was below ground and the outside didn't change at all. Because the ARB doesn't appears to be about things that are visually dissimilar.
Right.
Okay, so even if we take off the basement, which is what twenty five hundred?
Twenty four something.
I'm trying to be relatively.
Twenty two forty eight was the basement.
But if you if you remove the basement from the subject house, then and when you compare it to the other houses, you got to remove the basement from those houses as well.
No, I'm I'm saying because in some of these houses, there's split levels and not they're not completely not not that's a double negative, is that a positive? Completely not visible from the the street. Not, that's a double negative, that's a positive, completely not visible from the, the street.
Okay.
Um, this one, I believe Mr. Hartman is representing that it would pretty much be buried, that it would.
Correct. In fact, if I don't build the basement, let's say if the board says it's too big, I come back next week without a basement and now it's exactly similar, correct? It's the same as the rest of the houses. Nobody's going to realize if there's a basement underneath or there's not. I mean, it's completely, I don't mean buried, it's even the thickness of the floor. It's completely packed. So that's basically what I'm, what I'm trying to say. It, it square footage is a big thing. It's a number. It's actually in the plan. I mean, it's, it is something, but after all, it's what's visible and what's not visible, what is going to be proportionate, particularly if it's the ridge preservation. What's going to be seen from the view corridors, things like that. My opinion, again, it's up to the board. It doesn't matter if you have a basement, if you don't have a basement, if you don't see it. It was, this, this addition was designed to be the front extremely invisible. I think it's only about thirty feet wide or something like that, even less than that. It's mostly on the side and in the back. So in the front, it's not as wide as a lot of the other houses. And it's also one story in the front. So from a visual point of view, this addition looks like a small shed. From numbers, yes, it's a lot. Because again, it has the huge unfinished basement, has the mezzanine space, which is located in the middle of that attic roof. It has all of that, so.
But to be, to be fair, the visual impact with respect to size is not, would never be just measured from the front view. It's for, from any view.
Correct, from any view you can possibly see from a street, any street view. I mean, from aerial, you'll be able to see it, but, or someone is going to walk onto the lot. But from any road from the tight areas, correct?
Now, Rick, can we, is that something we can do if, if, if the basement is completely not visible, can we not use that point part in, um, in the similar or similar for the?
I think that it's, the context that you have this language of excessive dissimilarity or inappropriateness is, when you read it in context, it's in the architectural review, it's in the ridge preservation. And it it seems to me clear, but if you think differently, then you can rule that way, seems to me clear that what is being regulated is the visual impact of these things. That it's not regulating strictly square foot size. Now, maybe that's something that the village ought to do if it's concerned with that the impact of restricting only the visual outside would encourage people to go down two, three, four stories underground. And have these very large buildings that are simply hidden. And if that was something the board wanted, the board trustees wanted to go ahead and regulate, there's ways that you can regulate that. But it seems to me in the context of what you're dealing with and the code that you have to deal with, it's the visual impact.
It's how it looks when I'm standing in a street or a view corridor, looking at it.
That's correct.
So I think this board is grappling with two decisions. How do they feel it looks? And I'm just trying to summarize how it looks from almost looking at the building from this, you know, from the street level and the siding, the vinyl siding really, because those are the, those are the two things here. I, I think, Rob, you were on the board originally when this subdivision was approved. Do you remember vinyl siding being part of that original package?
No, I don't remember. I don't know if we have any notes on that.
Well, yeah, you would have notes because the resolution is very detailed and also there were examples of models that could be done. And I believe that those models included, although Natalie may be able to know better, recall better than I, even though she was not around in those years, being such a young pup. But it's, my recollection is that there were elements dealing with what materials you could use. I think that was the whole purpose of having the models was not only as to style, but also as to materials, but I'd have to look at that more closely, give you a definitive answer.
Yes, I'm not sure off the top of my head either, but I know we have extensive files on this subdivision and I'm sure that somewhere in there, there is something that specifies the materials.
So you may want to have that information before you make what I think are fairly significant decisions, a crossroads that you're having with respect to the issue on the materials to be used.
Yeah, I think it's going to affect not only this application, but the slew of other applications we have. You know, we have another one tonight and there's a bunch more coming down the road that are in the hopper already.
And Chris, I'm looking at, on, on my computer, I'm looking at the elevations of the rear and the right side of the house. Could you allow me to share my screen?
You should be able to now, Jonathan.
Thanks. You should be able to see it now. The point that, that Mr. Hartman was making was that, you know, the front of the house doesn't look that big, but I guess you really do need to consider who's going to be looking at this from the right side of the house? Or who's going to be able to see the rear of the house? Because that's where you get the, the full impact, visual impact of the addition, not from the front. The architecture has minimized the visual impact from, from the frontage, you know, looking, but I guess that, that's really the consideration. It, and I agree with Rick that, that if it's minimized in the front, it's not the only consideration you need to look at who, who could be looking at it from any angle.
Mr. Hartman, on that, what, the lower, um, the rear view on what's up on the screen right now, to the right, is that how the house exists right now?
Yes.
So none of those windows or anything are being changed?
No.
Okay.
I think the, the rear of this house puts up against the, that forever green strip. So it's really the, the neighbor, if you're looking at the house to the right.
To the right, yeah.
As far as the neighbors, I mean, particularly the neighbor on the right, since I'm going to be living there, I know the area. They did not come in as far as the public hearing.
Right.
Because they have no issue with it and really, other than them, other than the right side, it is very hard, the rear is very hard because it's, it's butts up to the, to the how is it called? The forever green area.
Right.
Um, it's only on the left side. And again, he didn't come and, because as a concern, as far as part of the public comments, but I know he has no issue with that. And as far as the front, yes, I did try and I always try the front. And that any, any portion that somebody could see from a street without having to go onto the lot, it should look really low, should have a lot of bigger roof area, lesser siding area. I could try the best that I could and I think that with this one is particularly, it looks very, very small from the front. As far as the material, I read the minutes and this particular project, they did at that point, which I heard from the last meeting, it may be that they did approve, they, which on the, on the minutes it does say, they approved siding, they even approved some Stockholm materials, but not white. It approved, I read the minutes and I can send it in, but actual minutes. But I do understand that after all, there's, the zoning does, I mean, says that has to be stone or something, something like that. But I would ask the board to consider the fact that it isn't existing. And the fact that they're not changing anything from the existing, so for imagine, if you would change a lot of windows of the existing, you would have to remove a lot of portions of the siding, then it pays to redo everything. But at this point, they're not. And I do ask the board if they can take that into consideration, the fact that it isn't existing. And the fact that I just drove by, there's about three hundred houses. I don't think there's one that does not have siding. I could not find one. So I guess at that point, it was a norm today. You know, and it was built then and it is existing. So, and it's not even one complies. So I would, I would ask the board if they could take that into consideration.
Alright, so what, what do the three of us want to do?
Were any of these houses approved by this board that he's mentioning?
Yes, basically all of them. I mean, as part of the original approvals, they brought in a lot of models and they all had siding. And particularly in the minutes, and that was back in, I think, oh nine or oh eight. And then if you look at the minutes, somewhere around thirteen, they brought in some additional models. And I can't, at the minute, you can see that the person brought the material, but it gives a list of approvals. And there's siding, stone, and some Stockholm. They give a list of colors and they approved all the colors, this particularly says in the minute, approved all the Stockholm colors, all the siding colors, besides a white, that something that I had hidden over, like something like that, that's in the minutes. But again, it doesn't really matter because, and this, I mean, to set a precedent in the house, in an existing house, I think is not maybe, again, it's up to the board. I would ask if it is to set a precedent, it shouldn't be maybe this house that isn't existing, maybe in a more newer house or something, that is going to be redone completely.
I think it would be helpful for the board if, for example, Jonathan went through the approvals of the various models and determined whether or not there were approvals that included the, the siding. I will tell you as a, just as a matter of law to be considered, is that that wouldn't necessarily control if it was contrary to the code. So even if the board made a decision that was agreed upon, if it's contrary to the code, there's no rights that are vested in that. By the same token, there is, it's something that you may want to take into consideration. If in fact, this planning board had previously approved siding as an acceptable exterior finish.
Well, if you drive through, if you drive through that development, I mean, there are so many houses that have siding. Like Mr. Hartman said, it's not just one, it's, I mean, there's a majority, I would say, of the houses in there have, have vinyl siding or at least two or three exterior walls of it. I guess I, I have a problem with burdening someone that has an existing house with siding. To say that, no, you can't have matching siding and now you either have a choice of redoing the entire house in wood or stone or, or brick. I, I think that's a heavy burden to put on.
I think that, for instance, Sandy, your conclusion would be different if in fact, none of those homes were approved for vinyl siding. And they just put it up and it wasn't enforced.
Okay, so maybe that's the case? So.
I'm not saying that's the case, and I doubt that it is, quite frankly, given that it's so prevalent. But I think you ought to have the information of what actually was approved.
Yeah, I, I guess another, another thing that's crossed, crossing my mind at this moment is I've driven through the subdivision. And I would guess that almost to the one, every house has shingles that are probably some type of asbestos shingles and they don't have clay tile roofing or cedar shake roofs. Like you'd see in upper New England or whatever. So I don't know that the roofing has been, roofing has been enforced as a natural material only either. It, perhaps what happened over time is it sort of morphed into looking for natural color or stone accents or brick accents, but not necessarily an, an entire house of stone, brick, or wood. So the, the, the you know, and I, I, I'd be happy to to, uh, uh, attempt to, to get into the minutes. And I might ask for some help and share the work with Natalie because I have a feeling that H2M may have better records of these, of the two thousand nine approvals and the more resolutions on, in files that, that I don't think NPV collected at the time, but the H2M did collect at the time. So, well, I'd, I'd be happy to work on that issue prior to the next meeting. But I think the, 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 the sort of this precedent problem is more than just deciding it would involve the roof treatments as well. I was thinking about this because it's a ridge preservation issue and the roofing is part of the code as well.
Rick, does it set a precedent for all ridge preservation going forward or just this site?
It depends on, on what you're doing. For instance, you know, there was a distinction made here with respect to, let's say, you were concerned with the excessive diss- dissimilarity in the size. But as the applicant has noted, one side of that may but up against a forever green and not be visible from every, any public way. That's a distinguishing characteristic that may impact your decision as, and certainly would impact the impact, the effect rather, of the precedent. So whenever you, the precedent is only for the same, very similar circumstances going forward. So the more that you distinguish this particular one from others, then it wouldn't apply necessarily generally, but only those that had the same or similar characteristics as this application.
Butting up against the forever green space, the entire basement being below grade.
The front looking not dissimilar and the other sides may not be readily visible from view corridors and public streets. Things like that are distinguishing features and therefore limit the breadth of the presidential value.
Right, I, I think you can see where I'm going, that I, I want to make sure if, you know, however the board goes with this house, that the approval is as specific to this location and this setup as, as possible. So how, how does the board feel about the, oh, let's, let's not talk about materials right yet? The overall appearance of the structure from the visible, the sides that are visible, which would be the neighbor side and the front of the house.
Well, I think it's rather, rather large. I would like to see a scaled down version of this addition.
I, I believe it's, it's quite large as well. From the view corridor, I believe it would be the, not even the side of the addition, right? That's would be in the view corridor, it would actually be the, the other side of the front.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're existing. I think, you know, I think the, the, the front blends in. I, I don't have a problem with the front at all. The windows are quite different than what's currently there. But again, if that's, the back is, is against forever green, so I don't think the squirrels and the deer and the bear will have a problem with that.
I think it was the side that was up against the forever green, not the back.
No, it's.
No, it's the back.
It's the back. Yeah. And I know Mr. Hartman stated that neighbors is cool with it, but we all know neighbors do. Neighbors.
Neighbors can change over time, but. again, it's, I mean, we just approved the changing of the house in, in Highland Mills, what was that?
Remember the.
Yeah, Princeton.
Princeton, the footprint stayed the same there though.
The footprint stayed the same, but I'm talking about the windows. Those windows were quite different than what was on there, similar to these windows, actually. Somewhat, um, again, if the, the current neighbor has no problem with it, that's what the public hearing is for, so I don't, I don't really necessarily have a problem even with the windows at this point, but the size, it, it is quite large.
Yeah, I think it's the basement that's getting me. Um, oh, the front looks nice, the front looks nice, the windows, listen, you want to have that size of windows and you want to be the, you want to pay to put blinds on them, go, go right ahead, that's up, that's up to you, you want to walk around in your birthday suit and neighbors can see, go ahead and do that too. Uh, that's not my problem really, at the end of the day. Um, whatever's gonna laugh, everybody so serious, we gotta laugh a little bit.
Chuckling.
Why are these some of the smartest decisions out there?
Can we wait for further information to look into the issue about siding from the notes and so forth?
Well, we definitely need that, I think, to, to go forward anyway, we need, we need at the, the report from N2NP Lockman and Natalie's.
But not every one of those houses that have been built up there have come before the planning board. I mean, Gary's issued building permits and.
But that's, Sandy, you're absolutely right, and that's one of the other things I was just going to ask, I think that if it appears from Jonathan's and Natalie's review that these were not part of the materials that were approved by the planning board, there should be a follow-up, certainly with respect to this home, as to whether or not they were approved by a building permit. And so that may be a, a different matter of, of the enforcement issue.
And if they, if they were, if they were part of the building permit, so it was known that these materials were being used, then to me, I don't, again, I don't think it's fair to the applicant to now say, well, because you are before this board, that we're going to impose something on you that somebody that built a brand new house, you know, three houses down, with total vinyl siding with the, with the building permit.
I, I understand, but also there is a very strong principle in New York zoning law. Characterized by a very famous case where someone built a high-rise in the city of New York. They built it a number of stories too tall. And the building inspector had allowed that by a building permit and said that it, to him, it was code acceptable, it was challenged by neighbors, it was determined that the code didn't allow that. And the highest court in New York required them to tear down those extra stories. Because everyone is running at a risk that when they get an okay from a public official, that it's in compliance with the code. And you run the risk because the code is what determines what does or does not apply.
So the building.
The reason for that is that otherwise it would sort of open the door for fraud and collusion where you know you're going to do something, this, that didn't happen here, and I'm not implying that it ever happened.
No, no.
But what it opens up to generally and why a, a court would go ahead and, and rule like that is that you need, you can't rely upon some individual official varying the code, is that it opened up to the fact of maybe then someone could do something with respect to corruption to get a public official to give them the okay, and then they could do things contrary to a code. So the law, which is the code, is what controls, not necessarily a particular permit or approval from a board or an individual.
Okay.
If I can add, from an aesthetic point of view, I did the mixture of stone and siding for the addition. I thought that's more aesthetically pleasing. But if the board assists, for example, to do the entire addition just from that stone that it has now in the 3D, I'm sure the client, if that's what the board wants, I'm sure he'll, a little bit like that. If you take a look as of now, if you take a look at page five, rest, stone and siding, we can do the whole thing from stone. And I mean, it's not, it has a very small front, so we can do that, if that's, that's part of a condition.
I, I think what the, the problem is here, Mr. Hartman, it's not necessarily your application that the board is taking issue with. It's, it's the gen, it's the whole general going forward from here. So I don't think, I don't want you to think anybody from this board is particular, picking on you in, in particular, or your application in particular, you just happen to be the one in front of us right now that we're discussing it about.
I understand.
Now, I, Robinson, I heard you say it's too big. Personally, I don't think the front is, is really that, to me, it looks like it ended on a, a one car garage in the front, really. It's the depth.
More the side.
Would that make it any, I'm just trying to throw alternatives out there, you know, if they did screening along the side of the, the property line there.
That'd be a pretty big screening.
Green, some giant arborvitaries or, you know, those things that have to be 20 feet tall. Because if we are asking him, saying that it is too big and we think it feels too dissimilar to the rest of the neighborhood, we, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to, I think we're gonna circle back to where we always get, well then, where do we want to see it? Because we have to give Mr. Hartman some direction. We can't just say it's too big, thank you very much, have a nice day, that's not fair to Mr. Hartman or, or his, or his client either.
I believe in some other applications we had, we, we did have some sort of compromises that we found acceptable. I don't know whether that was the Apple Hill one.
Yeah, that, I think that was Apple Hill, we, we went round and round about Apple, I think, for a while. And I don't want to do that here, I don't want to turn this into, I'd really like to give Mr. Hartman some clear direction of where we want to go. So, I'm gonna, being on the odd, I think, at this, for like first of all, I'm the odd guy out here, person out here, where I would say if the client was willing to put screening in along the side, that would buffer the view, the depth of the house and the road, I wouldn't be so, I would be so, uh, you know, wouldn't be so, sort of I'm looking for here. But a loss for words, I don't never.
Particular, particular.
Okay, we'll, we'll use particular, but I know you and Sandy both have, both mentioned that you feel it's too large, so chop off 20 feet? Chop off 10%? I mean.
But Chris, you brought up the issue that it was 27% larger than the other house and I mean, is there a line that, as far as how much we're gonna allow as far as expansion from the original planned development?
Yeah, and the 27% includes the basement, and that's why I was asking Rick about, is it overall square footage? Is it over, or is it overall visual impact? And it's really, it's visual impact, like Rick made the example of, they built a house six stories on the ground and they only had like a little outhouse silo on the front, they could have a 600,000 square foot house in the bedrock, but only 10 square feet would be showing up front, so yes, it would be a large home, but only the, the visual impact would be the little outhouse. It kind of, I know it's like a extreme example, but that's, but you know, the client is represented and based by the plans that you won't see the basement. So really, to me, the floor, the basement doesn't even, I know the square footage is there, but you don't see it anywhere. You don't even see it from the side.
If there is, um, planting to screen it, it should be evergreens, not deciduous trees that lose their leaves for six months of the year.
Yes, I, I would agree with you on that. Sandra?
Um, yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
Um, listen, you can still just, you don't sound convinced, and I don't, I don't want to make you.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to, to visualize the, the length of that, how far it goes back.
It's how, what's the depth from the corner to the back, Mr. Hartman?
From the corner, um, the rear corner to the back of the lot?
Well, no, from the corner of the new addition, how long is the new addition, again?
To back.
To back.
Uh, it's on the plans, give me one second.
Yeah, I know, it, the, the right, I'm, we're looking at it on the small version, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you just one second.
My old eyes, I'm over 40 now, I can say that. Natalie's probably the only one that can read it.
One second, I'll be, it's not, the problem is, it's not about this one, it's on the original one. And I'll give you just one second.
Is it 70, it looks like 70 somewhat feet? 78 feet?
It is, to be exact, 78, that is correct. Again, um, as far as the trees, the way I look at it, yes, number wise, it's a, it's a lot. Um, as far, you could probably have a, probably the same, only a 2,500 square foot addition that is going to have a much, much bigger impact on the front, sides, or whatever. It's, 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 I look at it, it's not about numbers, after all, the whole ridge preservation and the whole similarity to neighbors is all about how it looks. Um, as far as looks, we tried pretty much to make it look from the front as a one car garage addition. As I said, I could come back and remove the basement entirely and all of a sudden it's only about one or 2% of the houses. Again, it's not gonna make a difference, get back to visually. But I do understand in order to compensate for the numbers, um, a condition to put um, all year round trees, um, just because the numbers are there and I'm asking something more than typical, even though it doesn't look like, um, so I should have to add that, it's totally understandable. And I can, we can put that in as part of a condition, and, and I'm sure the client is going to understand it because after all, the numbers is 27% bigger, so it's things like that, that they'll definitely understand, and I, I think it's, makes sense.
I, I think it would, the only thing is, I don't think it would be a condition, Rick, it would have to be on, it'd have to be a landscape drawing, right?
Okay, we can come back with, we can come back with things like that. And I'll also talk to the client again, how we can make the numbers um, more similar, again, he'll say, take off the basement, but the, it's gonna be a little bit of a joke because it doesn't do anything to the neighborhood, you know, but, uh, I'll see what I can do about that, I'll definitely do about the trees.
Yeah.
And again, making the front more smaller, I can, I didn't put any large windows in the front for the same reason. So in the front, it looks very similar to the old one, particularly small windows, you know, try the best that I can from the front.
Now, while me, while the board is still here, is the basement an issue?
Is what? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, is the basement an issue?
I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the basement, I, I, I mean, again, reading, reading NPV's, um, explanation of things, I, I question, I do question the use.
It's not gonna be handled in the condition.
Right, and that's, as long as that's a condition. And, and the screening, the screening, the landscaping goes along the side. I guess, I guess I'm all right with the basement, um, as it is.
Rob?
I agree, I don't have an issue with the basement.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with the basement as long as it, if you're gonna tell me you're gonna start digging window wells and stuff like that, I think there'll be a problem there because that'll be, then it becomes a visual, visual from the street, then you know the basement's there. Um, but the screening.
Well, they, you said there's window wells in the front, right?
No, no.
Yes.
Yes, there is, there is window wells in the front, again, you won't.
Sure of them. I mean. Yeah, that's what those, those windows below the slab, below the, when you look at the garage door and you see those to the lower right of the garage door, there's those, those windows are opening underground.
Right.
Holes.
But again, you won't, you won't be able to see that, it's technically impossible.
I think the, the, the real, the, the thing that, the thing that makes the addition big is it goes back, uh, depending on whether you measure inside or outside walls, it's either 77 or 80 feet. And the, the backside is about 40 feet wide, so you, you know, it's, it's, that's very big. Uh, so i- if you require evergreen planning, since mitigation for that, that's the, that's the vis, the area of, of, of a large visual impact.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what we're getting, I think we need to see some, some forever, some constantly green vegetation on that side. Okay, and we're not, we're not, because we have to wait for research to come back on the vinyl siding issue anyway, so we're not in a, a place to make a decision tonight, anyway. Anything else for Mr. Hartman, or do you have any other questions for us?
Yeah, I did, I, I have just one other question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so there's a, there's actually three doors into this addition.
Yes.
One in the front, one on the side, and one in the back.
That is correct.
Why are there so many doors into this addition? If that's just like one big open room on the bottom.
Um, it's not one big open room, the first one is the, is the mudroom, um, the front is the mudroom.
Okay.
Currently does not have a mudroom, this, this entry.
Okay.
Um, the back one leads to the, from the great room to the patio, to the backyard. And the side one is, is, is the side door that has near the stairs, if you look at the floor plan, it's near the stairs.
Now, if, if you're looking at the back of the house.
Yeah.
Where it connects to the existing house, that, that wall, is there, is there, are there windows and a door on that side as well?
No.
There's no windows on that side.
Let me take a look at the plan, with door, definitely not. Let me see if there is above, no, there's no windows or doors.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Rob?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hartman.
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll definitely, um, put in some revisions. Um, if I do have, I'm sure the town has the minutes as well, but I can definitely take, I remember reading it there, I still, I have to look for it, if I haven't, I'll send it in.
Um, yeah, if you could please, uh, and if you could email Natalie and I any, any minutes you've collected about the approval and any, uh, construction over the years and the use of, of natural materials. Uh, anything you find, if it saves us an hour or two of work, it'll be a, a savings for you and your client as well, obviously, so we'd love to get a head start on any materials you've collected.
Definitely.
But the submission, the submission should be made to the building department, who will then distribute it to both Jonathan, Natalie, as well as the rest of the board.
Not a problem.
Okay, that's fine, that, that, that's much cleaner to do it that way, to give it to Maria Rubio.
She's got to stamp it in it, you know, and everything anyway, so.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night now.
Good night, sir. All right, so next item on the agenda. Feldman, Southfield Falls ARB, public hearing for ARB review of a proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located 77 Southfield Falls and is known to the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, section 255, block four, lot two, uh, this was noticed on Friday, May 28th, 2021. Uh, this was noticed on Friday, May 28th, 2021, um, and notices were sent out. Jonathan, you're up again.
Hi, hello.
Hello. All right.
You have a memorandum from Nelson Pope Voorhees dated May 27th. Uh, we noted that uh, sheet A2 has been updated to show the floor plan for the second level, which had been missing from the first submission. We wanted a clarification that sheet A6 and A7 say windows are selected by other and uh, uh, it looks like maybe some wording was left out. On the bulk requirements, uh, we would like the application updated to show that it's in the cluster, the conservation cluster development overlay district as well as R1A. Um, the lot coverage looks good. The, it appears to meet the uh, bulk standards for the yards. Uh, the lot width is unchanged from the approval, so that's okay. Uh, the proposed building height is 33 feet 4 inches, which is just below the uh, allowable building height of 35 feet. We'd like that also added to sheet S1, uh, because uh, that sheet just shows the height is less than 35 feet, so in that position, it should have the, the more specific height in terms of uh, uh, ridge preservation. Once again, the board needs to look at it to determine if the addition structures blend into the hillside to the maximum practical extent. Uh, the classic cream is the color for the proposed vinyl siding. Uh, and we raised the issue of the vinyl siding not being a natural material and that creating classic cream not being a natural color. And uh, you know, we would want you to look into uh, an alternative siding material, perhaps. The barkwood shingles are a natural color, uh, in our opinion. The uh, we specified again that anti-reflection window film be used on southerly exposures. Uh, and uh, the applicant should confirm that no vegetation clearing or removal of 8-inch or greater caliber trees is proposed. On the architectural review, um, they have submitted an aerial photograph with the subject home and proposed addition superimposed. Uh, we still would like to see photographs of nearby homes as viewed from the street. Or the types of, you know, floor, floor plan comparisons with nearby homes that were submitted with the uh, last application. And under seeker, this would appear to be a type 2 action, as it's a renovation of a single-family home on an approved lot. And we are not aware of any resources that would require it to be sent to the county for a GML review. That's our report of May 27th.
So as far as the siding questions, I think it's going to be the same as the previous applicant, so I don't think we need to beat that up, right? We need to.
Right.
The minutes, oh, wait, did we lose Natalie? Sorry, I see you.
I don't see her on the, the Hollywood Squares.
Maybe she thought you were going to review all of the siding again.
Here she comes, I see her again.
Okay, she's there.
Sorry, I just stepped away for one second, what did I miss?
No, we just wanted to make sure you didn't like fall off the meeting and we were just going to keep talking and you weren't here.
I'm here, I actually went to go get the files for WP3 ARB, believe it or not, so.
Yeah, we were just discussing that, we, we're not going to talk about the siding on this application tonight, because we already think, I think we talked about that enough on the previous application, so, let's skip siding questions for now.
But it should be that Natalie and Jonathan include this home in their review as well.
Yes.
Yes.
That's why you get paid the big bucks, Rick. All right, so, questions for Jonathan on his report with this home?
Yes. Surprise, um, on Jonathan, on, on all the the various um, plans that we've gotten. The driveway has not been moved. Now, the, the addition is for the garage, one of the additions is for a garage, so somehow that driveway has to get moved.
Who doesn't want to drive into their living room on a Friday night, come on!
So, I mean.
Uh, you're, 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 you're absolutely right, I mean, some people put other things in their garage other than the car, but usually the driveway does, the, right now, the driveway is headed right for the addition rather than the garage.
Well, on the proposed picture, they have
They have it.
A car park, so either they park it on the front lawn.
But on the plans, nothing is moved, so my question is, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but that looks like a heck of an angle that would have to go from the entrance of the driveway to the, to the new garage, so is that driveway going to have to be moved, and if it has to be moved, is that like a different curb cut on the, the existing road?
It wa, it, it doesn't necessarily require a different curb cut, you, I think you could design a uh, a driveway that curved to get to the garage, but I, uh, I, I think that's a very good catch, Sandy, and I would ask that the applicant, I, I can only assume that you'd want a car to be able to drive into the garage and we'd like to see the proposal on the site plan S1 of how the driveway will be redesigned to serve the new garage.
I thought I saw Mr. Feldman. He was here a minute ago. Is there someone here representing the applicant? Oh, wait, hold on, sorry, he's in the waiting room looking to get in.
Nice.
I can believe that, that's my fault.
Yeah, what's the other question?
Yeah, there's a question, Mr. Feldman, there's a question about the driveway? Is the driveway being relocated to line up with the new garage?
Because the site plan doesn't show any change to the driveway, that, the site plan shows the existing driveway heading right into the 130 square foot front addition.
Okay, hello, hi, sorry, I fell down from the, from the Zoom meeting. Um, the driveway now is enough wide for, for, to, for the new created uh, garage, but I can, I can fix it to show that better on the new, that the, to match it better to the new garage.
Yeah, I think you, you would need to do that, I mean, unless there's a hovercraft involved, um. I have a question, the sookah room that's being built, would that replace the need to have the awning put on the deck, the new deck in the backyard? So that, would that take the place of that?
What again, um, it's, yeah, that's correct, it's a sookah room with the, um, skylights. And we will not, yeah, we will not need anymore the, the.
The awning?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Sandy, I probably cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to understand, so you're saying that the, the driveway currently goes past the edge of the house?
No, it needs to be a little bit wider for the new garage.
So it's just, okay.
So in other words, you'd probably leave the pavement that's in place for the existing drive and just widen it?
Yes.
How far away would that be for the house that's next to it? Hold on, I'm going to pull it up on.
I'm so sure I like that.
Hold on, we'll get it on Google.
You see, we have to add, we have to add, not from the beginning of the, not from the beginning of the, of the driveway, just by the end, we need to, to make it wider.
And you'd be leaving all this existing asphalt?
You see, now it's going curved, it's going.
Right. Would you be leaving all of that, or would you take that out?
No, we just, we will just written that out for, to the new, to the new um, garage extension.
Okay.
Is there, is there any code about driveways? I mean, you can just have asphalt all over?
Uh, as long as, you're not supposed to have parking in the front setback and you have development coverage limit.
So, if, if that stays, what's there stays, then isn't that additional parking?
I think that, that, um, I, I need to look for the citation, but my recollection is that the, the driveway is allowed to, you know, puncture the front yard, and then once you get past the front yard line, then it can widen out for some parking spaces in front of the garage. And what you can see is in, in the uh, if you, you can see on the site plan, I'm looking at it now. Um, I probably should, should share the screen, but if you look at the site plan sheet S1, it's also called the survey plan S1.
I'll stop sharing so you can share. Okay, go ahead.
Um. My acrobat is frozen here.
Um, what about your Adobe?
That, that basically, the, that there's a lot of area in front of the new 391, 91 square foot garage that's beyond his front yard line, that he could pave legally. But widening the driveway unduly within the front yard line, which is in the first uh, 25 feet, um, isn't, isn't allowed to create any parking space. But I think he could, he could design something that would work and probably meet co, but we have to see it.
Oh, that has to be on the, on the site plan?
Correct, S1. Also, I could share my screen now, it's working. Uh, can you see this, my, the hand of my mouse in this, that I'm wiggling?
Yes.
That is the front yard boundary, so if he um, on this one, you could see the garage. He could pave this area right here where I'm sliding the hand.
Yes.
And I think he could, could make a conforming uh, driveway and this, and then use this area as a parking area. Um, and that, and that would work, and his lot coverage um, is at 17.8%, he can go up to 35%. So I don't think he has any problem with the uh, coverage limitations.
But the one other thing that you should consider is, again, whether or not this is an element that is excessively dissimilar from the neighborhood with respect to the other driveways. If it's basically going to be paving a very large area.
But Sandy is absolutely correct, um, it had not occurred to me, since, you know, he showed no change to the existing driveway and just put the addition right there. If, if this is indeed the, the garage, the driveway needs to go to the garage and there needs to be change in the driveway and needs to be designed. And it needs to be in a way that meets the uh, the zoning, so that it does not create parking in the front yard, and also, yes, it should not be exceedingly dissimilar with other people's front yards and front driveways. You may want to consider uh, Mr. Feldman, just taking the existing curb cut and just, and, and just running the driveway this way and taking some of this paving out, because it may not make sense to have your driveway dead end into this, into the front wall of the new addition. Maybe we'd rather put some landscaping there along this foundation rather than have the, because you're going to have to cut this pavement up anyway in order to install the foundation for the addition. So you're going to be tearing this area up anyway.
Sandy, any other questions?
No.
How do we feel about the overall visual impact of this particular home in the neighborhood? I'm a little concerned about the one addition on the side that's going towards uh, uh, the Zhang, I think it is property, is where it's currently listed, I mean, that, I think according to the drawings, that side addition real, bumps right up to, I guess it would be the uh, the setback limit, and there is nothing between either neighbors. Um, the rear addition, I think, is fine, I, I think is okay, um, the front addition, it makes it look, I don't know, boxy.
So Chris, you're talking about the garage addition, first, where's Zhang on that stuff?
That's, I, it puts, according to the drawing, it puts it right on the
Setback.
The setback.
Well, it's not right on, it's 15.8 feet, according to what I'm looking at, and the side setback is 10.
So it's 5 feet from the side setback.
Yeah.
It's really, you're, you're still close, that, I mean, when there's no, when there's no, there's no, um.
No landscaping.
Landscaping between the two, you're, you're literally looking house to house. But that's my view, like I said, I like the addition of the sookah room, because it takes the, the place of having to have the, have the awning on the outside of the house. How's, how you, how, Rob? How you feel?
Um, I agree with that, I, I just wish that, I think one time we asked for a smaller set of plans for the um, size wise for the board and the consultants get the larger ones, is that something that I remember correctly? Because.
Yeah.
To work with so many sheets.
I'll talk to Maria about making sure we get smaller plans. But overall, how do you feel about the home?
Uh, the front is fine, it's attractive. Once again, we see that most of the addition of the house is towards the rear and side. I think that was a good point about the driveway, I, I was wondering if we put that into uh, the comments, but I'm glad Sandy did, yeah, um. I just want to make sure that the, the roof line is uh, the same as the uh, existing one, is that the same height and everything?
Which addition? They're all different.
I'm looking at the uh, the front page of the large set of plans.
Yeah, I think there's, um, Jonathan, I think on those, on the, in the PDF, like the last page or two, he has other renderings.
I'm going to find that.
I'm picking on you, because you've got your, your computer shared already. Nah, the other way, go to, go to the back. Keep going. Keep clicking. There you go.
Or is windows being selected by other?
I had mentioned that in my memo, that, that.
Do we, I mean, how does that work?
By other what? By other what? I, I mean, I, I thought it was an incomplete sentence.
Yeah, don't they have to be on the plan?
That's what I thought, that's what I'm saying.
Yes. That I wanted an ex- explanation of, of that, you need to, you need to select what kind of, you know, show what kind of windows you're going to have.
Correct.
Um, I'm waiting for the interior. I'm waiting for the interior designer to decide the look of the windows.
Okay, well, in order for this application to either be approved or disapproved, we need to know exactly what they're going to be, it can't be uh, after this board reviews. Because it could potentially change the look of the home.
No, I, I understand, it will be, it will be probably the same like this, maybe, maybe a little bit more spread it, but it will be, it's the, the, that, that's the idea, just a big window.
Oh, the board needs to know exactly what you're proposing.
I understand, I understand, I will, I will add that for, on the plan.
And the only feedback I would offer is, I would like to see some uh, privacy shading, uh, shading, screening. It's not even that late yet, on the, if you're looking at the house on the right-hand side, where that garage addition comes closer to the next door neighbor.
Um, you can see it, we will, um, it will become, it will become closer, but uh, it's just, it just, the, 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 just this twelve fifteen feet.
Rest of the board?
I, I don't have anything else.
Rob?
Nothing else? Nothing else, no.
All right, so then we're okay with this, other than knowing what the windows are going to be?
And you wanted some screening, Chris?
Yeah, some screening on the, yeah, where your hand is.
This area?
Yeah.
And um,
The driveway.
And, and the redesign of the driveway in the rendering, it shows the driveway going right into the garage.
Yes.
Rendering shows the, the, the simulation of the front of the house shows that the, the pavement removed here and a walk going to the new driveway that's over here, so let's show that on the site plan.
Okay.
Um, oh, sorry, I didn't want to, I forgot, still a public hearing, Rick, you didn't remind me.
Actually, Natalie was asking me the same question, and I assumed that before you closed, you were going to do it.
I was, I was, I was getting there, but usually I, I get a little proud inside, um.
Also, I think, Chris, you, you should confirm with Mr. Feldman that he heard the discussion concerning the uh, outside materials from the prior application. So he knows that there's going to be some additional research being done to determine that issue.
Did you catch what we had with Mr. Hartman just before you? Mr. Feldman?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you understood we're waiting for some additional, not from you, but from our consultants to give us some additional research on the spot choices.
Okay.
All right.
He was, he was doing the same, right, just matching what's there?
Yes, deciding that's there. Um, okay, so again, this is a public hearing for Feldman South Falls, Southfield Falls. Anybody, any member of the public that wishes to speak on the Feldman Southfield Falls app, please unmute yourself, state your name and where you live, and address your, any comments or concerns to the board. Again, this is the Feldman Southfield Falls ARB Public Hearing. Any, anybody wishing to speak? Last call for the Feldman Southfield Falls ARB Review Public Hearing. Okay, I'll make a motion to close the Feldman Southfield Falls uh, ARB uh, Public Hearing.
A seconded.
Seconded by Rob, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and Mr. Feldman, are you clear on what we, what we need?
Yes, I'm clear with the, with, I need to provide the exact plan for the driveway and also for the screening and for the
Windows.
For the window, yes, I will, I will try to provide this, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for your time tonight, sir.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Wait. Why don't I think we were done, I don't know how I thought that for a minute. Uh, I, a public hearing for Woodbury Commons Ralph Lauren Coffee Truck. Public hearing proposed amendment site plan special permit for the relocation of Ralph's Coffee Kiosk and interior renovation of Polo Ralph Lauren Retail Store for associated back of house to support said kiosk. Said property is located within Woodbury Common two eighty-three Red Apple Hill Court in Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Woodbury, tax map section two two five dash one dash seventy dot two. Again, this was published on Friday, May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one, and the notifications were sent out via mail as well. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, um, I think we all know what you're here for, does anybody from the board need a refresher? Was everybody?
No.
Okay. Natalie, well, back to you, ladies first.
Alrighty, um, so tonight, uh, the application is listed for a public hearing. Uh, at your last meeting, you reconfirmed your secret action. Uh, so, once those are both satisfied, uh, we believe the discussions regarding the kiosk operations have raised some important questions related to the operation and the enforcement of those locations. Um, and obviously with this particular emphasis on the proposed coffee truck. Uh, you'll note in the history section of our memo, um, has, historically, although there were more than eight approved kiosk locations, uh, only eight kiosks were permitted to operate at any one time. Uh, when the Niagara location was abandoned in twenty eighteen, we believe the overarching intention of that action was to allow the double kiosk to operate as long as the total number of operating kiosks was seven. Um, also, at the time of that approval, the information booth was converted to GLA, but it wasn't specifically characterized as a kiosk. Um, I think in light of this application and pending the reinstatement of the Niagara location, it would be helpful to clarify the questions that I listed in our memo on page three. Um, and if you agree, you could include those as part of your potential action, and I think that would help assist tracking and enforcement of the various kiosks moving forward. Um, so with reference to those questions, the first one was, is the Ralph Lauren location to be abandoned or permitted as an approved alternate kiosk location? Um, we think if it is to be abandoned, then the applicant would have to reapply to the board if and when they decided to occupy that location. If it's an approved alternate, then the board should decide if only the coffee truck could be permitted at the Polo location, or if another kiosk could be constructed there. Um, the second question was, should the operation of kiosks be defined based on the number of structures or GLA? Um, in our opinion, and in consultation with the building department, I think the cleanest way to track their operation is actually going to be through GLA, but um, you know, obviously that's up to the board's discretion. Um, the third question has to do with the information booth that was converted to leasable area in twenty eighteen. Um, the question is, should it be included in the GLA or the permitted operating number of kiosks? Um, the applicant had us advised that it's not considered a kiosk, but they do list that information booth as a kiosk in the GLA tally. Um, if you choose to track kiosk operation through GLA, then whether it's a kiosk or just GLA, it doesn't particularly matter um, as long as the booth is accounted for in the tally. Uh, if you chose to che- track the kiosks based on the number of operating structures, then I think this question becomes more important. Um, the last question was, can the coffee truck be located anywhere or only the approved Polo and potentially the Niagara Court locations? Um, in my opinion, it seems that the operation of this coffee truck is tied to the back of the house operations at Polo, and sort of how that works is basically being in proximity to that area. Um, so based, because of that unique characteristic and potentially related to ARB, if, if you wanted to consider that, um, we think it would be appropriate to limit that to the approved locations. Um, the only other couple of comments that I wanted to uh, just bring up to the board was that we have asked for a revised GLA tally um, in anticipation of your potential action, and you know, we've stated it before, for Woodbury Common, uh, all future applications involving GLA should have this submitted. Um, the other item was respect, with respect to referral to the ESOs. Um, since the Niagara location and the Polo locations were previously reviewed by the ESOs and then subsequently approved by the board, um, you know, it may not be so critical, but if you did refer uh, the application to the ESOs and they had any comments, we think that compliance with that could be handled as a condition of your action. Um, and the last was that in review of the overall kiosk RMU and food truck plan that was submitted, we did notice a few discrepancies from prior approvals. Um, but again, if you agree, we think that we could work with the applicant to revise that during the plan signing process. Um, other than that, I, I don't typically pose questions like I did in my memo for tonight's meeting, but I, uh, these came up in my mind as being critical for managing the operation of those structures. And uh, hopefully it helps flush out some of the details with respect to how the planning board would like to see these managed moving forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Natalie, for that, um, as far as managing, um, I think personally, it's whatever's going to be easiest for your office and the building department um, to, to, to do this day to day, right? Because at the end of the day, where we, we lean on you and the building department to, to let us know if they're in compliance as far as GLA or, or number of kiosks uh, that they have or can have. Um, and I definitely don't want to screw up or change any kind of a system that you have in place that works for you guys already. Um, so I'm not trying to pass the buck back to you, but I also want to make it as easy as possible for you guys going forward, because at the end of the day, you really are the gatekeepers here when it comes to that type of information.
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, I appreciate that, and I think, um, now that we have this overall GLA tally, it makes this management of, you know, what's available and what's being occupied really easy, um, especially since we have the plan to refer back to. And I did speak to um, the building department about this, and I think um, they're in general agreement, so. And I think some of the issues that have now occurred, right, where the double kiosk was approved and then one was relinquished, but how did that affect the GLA? It just resolves itself, um, knowing that there's a finite amount of GLA reserved for kiosks and, and that's it.
Yeah, I think, so I think it's a great way of doing it, because then you just start with a number you take away, when you hit zero or negative, you've, you've gone too far.
Right.
Um, so this, as Sandy and Rob, how do you feel? Are you guys okay with uh, the H2M and the building department still managing it the way they are through GLA? Or do we want to see some sort of change to that?
Yeah.
While, while you're considering that, if I could interrupt, just for purposes of being able to clearly draft a resolution, could you go through, when you are discussing this, go through those four questions Natalie posed in a memo and just answer them one way or the other?
Okay, so you, should I just do that now, get it out of the way?
Sounds good.
Okay, um, is Ralph, is the Ralph, uh, Lauren location to be abandoned or permitted as an approved alternative kiosk location? Is the first question. So I interpret this as, this is going to be the kiosk location, that we're not approving two separate locations at the same time. Sandy?
I agree.
Rob?
So Ralph Lauren is to be abandoned?
Yes.
On the east side of the store.
The original one that we.
Right, and that this would become the kiosk location.
For the coffee truck, yeah.
Off, sorry, coffee truck.
That's okay.
Immovable coffee truck.
And then again, if the, if the applicant wanted to use the Ralph Lauren spot, they'd have to just come back before the board and get that approval again.
Yeah.
True.
I know you said might be some time from now, right? Probably years, I think is what you had mentioned, so. Maybe all new faces here, oh, a couple. Um, number two, should the operation of kiosk be uh, defined based on a number of operating structures or GLA? I think we answered that, GLA, right?
GLA.
Asked and answered, right, is that the term that you use, Rick?
Use it all the time.
We agree.
Especially with my kids.
Oh, come on, your kids are much older now. Um, is the information booth that was converted to leasable area in two thousand eight considered a kiosk, and it should be included in the number slash GLA of permitted operating kiosks? GLA, right?
GLA.
Yes.
Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And number four, can the coffee truck be located anywhere or only the approved Polo and potentially Niagara Court locations?
Only in the potential, only in Niagara.
In the Niagara Court locations and in the basement pool.
Yes.
All right. I got a smirk, he's paying attention. So I just gotta see.
Only if it has a ramp that we can get it down to.
All right, so those are the four questions, Rick, you good?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any other questions for Natalie and her report?
Chris, I, I do, and at the risk of looking very stupid, but this has always confused me. On, on um, C thirteen, page C thirteen that we were um, issued, as far as the legend, it talks about alternate RMUs, alternate kiosks. What is, what are alternate? Are those sites that were approved and not used and not abandoned?
Right, so um, with both the RMU approvals and the kiosks, a certain number of sites were reviewed and approved um, at one time, I think it, I, I, I don't have the history now, because I truncated our memo, but I think at one time it was uh, fifteen kiosk locations, but only eight were approved to be operational. And then I think it was upwards of like twenty-five RMU locations, but only thirteen uh, were allowed to be operational, so.
I think it was forty-four.
Oh, okay, so substantially more, right, and um, the, when they were reviewed, they were reviewed by the ESOs and, and implications for traffic and, and making sure that all of those, you know, issues could be accommodated, um, so those locations were approved, knowing that um, you know, there were no issues there. I don't think I said that properly, but does that make sense?
Okay, okay, so the alternates are not counted in the GLA?
Right.
Or, or use are not counted in GLA.
Oh, okay, that.
That's a different thing, alternate
Right.
kiosk locations and RMUs are not counted i- in GLA.
So what will happen is um, when we're tracking the GLA, we'll be able to refer to the plan and that tally and see which locations are operational. Um, and then if they're, they can't be over that two thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet. So for instance, um, like say K one oh nine was not operational, and they chose, chose to operate K one oh two, which was an approved location, it would be, it would even out with as far, as far as the square footage under GLA.
Okay. So then, I guess I'm, I'm just confused, and if, if that's how it's been working, then why doesn't what we approved in, for the original Polo one, just become an alternate as well?
Well, that was.
I know what I said to begin with, that we, it should be abandoned, but now I'm now I'm confused why it's not considered an alternate kiosk as well.
We would prefer, we would prefer it to be an alternate, and then that way it doesn't involve the planning board in the future. We just really have to go to the building department for a building permit to put it in that location.
I just want.
Be permissioned GLA
Right.
From the other location.
I just want to be consistent with, with what's been done up to this point and going forward, so that's why I'm confused as to why. Chris, do you understand what I'm saying? Robert, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
I think, Sandy, if I might uh, just step in here for a second, I, I think that part of the concern, and Natalie can correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you end up continuing to add alternate locations, it will get out of hand. And so um, this would, you, you have already approved certain alternate locations. And the question, the first question that you responded to is, well, do you want to keep adding to those? Or do you want to keep that as a, these are so many locations, and if now you have one, like the present one that was approved, and now you're going to add another one, are you going to always leave that residue as an alternate location? Or do you want to have them abandon that and just keep the same number of locations that alternate?
I guess that's my complete question then, so now as of tonight, then moving forward, as these possibly continue to come before us for different things, we are no longer going to have alternate. What's alternate now is that, that's it, that's staying as alternate, and going forward, we're not going to have any more alternates.
Well, that's, that's your decision. Well, that's that's your decision.
That's what basically I'm saying to Chris and and Robert at this point.
Right.
Right, that's what you want to do, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now I understand, thank you.
And just, just for the for the record, I had done a memo, but it's late and I don't need to go over all the things Natalie did. One of the things that I noticed was there's a monument directory type sign that's in the middle of the area. And on the site plan for the Niagara seating area where they're going to put the raffler and coffee truck, it didn't show that monument type sign in the middle, and I wanted to see where that is in relation to the coffee truck. And also, my whole response to this discussion of the alternates and the RMUs and the kiosks is the the plan that they submitted really didn't didn't help. Because it's still confusing which ones are approved and which ones are alternate, and and there seems to be nine or maybe ten and not eight. So at the end of this. I'd like to see something that that clearly talks about which which places are going to be approved locations, which are alternate and 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 have them have them add up to the number of approvals that we have on record.
So just to be clear, we are going to work, that overall kiosk RMU and food truck plan has to be modified. There are discrepancies from the prior approvals that don't actually pertain to the Niagara location or the Polo location. That will be revised, and then moving forward, it's not really going to be the number of kiosks. It's going to be that Woodbury Common has been allocated two thousand one hundred and ninety-five square feet of GLA. And the operational kiosks have to be within that limit. So for instance, if they weren't operating the double kiosk, they might have another kiosk location operational, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense.
So if they go to an an alternate, they don't come back before us, they just go to the building department?
That's right.
As long as they're within the GLA that's allowed.
I think that changed everybody a little bit of 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 work and time.
The other thing I want to make sure that we're clear on is these are exterior kiosks, because there are kiosks within the food court that are not part of this. These are just exterior kiosks only.
But the.
But all of that is included in the GLA tally.
Correct, those are included in the GLA, but they're they're a different brand of kiosk.
I think we're good on that, right Natalie?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, before I go to the public, does any, Sandy or Rob, you have anything else for Jonathan or Natalie?
I just wanted, Jonathan, I think we got a late email that had that sign.
We did, yeah, I think I did see that yesterday, but I I didn't. If if that's responsive, then that's good, but I haven't had a chance to to review that. We did send it, it's sixteen feet away from where the kiosk could be. Great.
Okay, I I thought I had, I started remembering sixteen feet somewhere, I wasn't sure where I was from, it was that email you just sent in. Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so before I go to the public, rest of the board is okay, no more questions for consultants?
Good.
Okay. Alright, so this is an opportunity for the public to speak on the Woodbury Commons Ralph Lauren Coffee Truck. Review application that's in front of us right now, just unmute yourself and state your name and. Next call. Second call. For the Ralph Lauren Coffee Cart. Third and final call for the public to speak on the Ralph Lauren Coffee Cart. I will offer a motion to close the public hearing for the Ralph Lauren Coffee Cart.
A second.
Questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll offer a motion for counsel to draft a motion, a resolution of approval. With whatever conditions we spoke about. Last two meetings.
A second.
Second by Sandy, any questions?
I have one thing, sorry. Do you want to refer this application to the ESOs and then have their comments incorporated as part of your action? Or would you suggest that this has been a moot point?
I think it's, I mean.
Four, right?
Right. Just wanted to be consistent and clear, okay.
Just to clarify, did I did speak to Gary and he did talk to the ESOs, I haven't heard back from him, but he was going to just run it by them. So he probably will have a response anyway.
So what we have, when we have the meeting before the with the resolution, if we have to make any changes, so we saw that one. Offer. Do we vote? We didn't vote, did we? Okay. All in favor, Rick is a, Rick is a no, so all in favor of having council draft a resolution of approval?
All post. You very much.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Good night.
Alright, everybody get a sip of coffee, Mountain Dew. Whatever, whatever your caffeine beverage of choice, we're getting there. Highland Mills Group Center. This is not a public hearing, this is a discussion for a review from referral of zoning petition from the village board requesting a zoning amendment to designate parcels within the senior housing overlay district. I see Mr. Lithgow. Feel like you're doing a rock room. Alright, good evening, so who's and Barry is in a closet somewhere. They don't let you out that often, huh? Alright, so who's doing a thousand foot overview?
I guess I'll start and then Caleb will do the five hundred foot overview and then Barry will have some comments on the design.
Okay.
This application is the result of a process that began in two thousand sixteen. When the village agreed to make some amendments to its senior housing ordinance to allow the development of a project with three stories on the site. We then went and submitted a petition to be rezoned. It went through a process that village board. After you folks had done a negative secret declaration in May of two thousand eighteen, there was a public hearing. There were a couple of issues that were identified, which the board, village board asked us to address. One issue was eliminating the need for a traffic signal at the intersection of Timber Ridge and the project driveway, proposed project driveway on Route thirty-two. Ken Morsted, who is here tonight as the traffic consultant, developed a alternate driveway location up near the mortgage location, mortgage office. That did not require a single, did provide acceptable levels of service, provided acceptable site distances. The second issue was the Halit Avenue Pump Station. There was an existing consent order with, because of infiltration issues. And those issues were addressed by Timber Ridge. Over the last year or so, I believe they're completed, but we will verify that with Timber Ridge representatives. So those two issues were raised by the village board, and in response, we developed a modified plan for ninety-six units. It was a public hearing in January and February of two thousand twenty. As a result of the hearing, the village board decided not to proceed with consideration of that project. So we basically went back and looked at the original proposal. We have talked to representatives of the board, we provided some information about the continuing need for senior housing in the village. There's an updated report, which I believe the applicant shared with the village board. And that indicates a continuing need based on census data that supports the need for this project. So we've basically gone back to the original eighty-four unit concept. There are three modifications from what you had previously granted the negative declaration of. One is the location of the driveway. We are retaining the proposal that was developed for the ninety-six unit proposal. You're with the driveway coming out on thirty-two by the mortgage office. The second is a relocation of the buildings to provide better access to the parking area. And basically that just involves shifting one building from the north, from a north-south to an east-west axis. And Caleb will explain that a little bit. And the third modification was to basically update the room layout or the unit layout to reflect the minimum square footage in the village code. We hadn't, it hadn't been picked up before, but there is a minimum requirement, and that minimum requirement fits with what is essentially two-bedroom units. And Barry will talk a little bit about the layout and the need for it. And what the applicant's anticipated use is going to be. We don't think it's going to actually be used as bedrooms, as most of you folks probably have been doing like me. You spent the last year working out of your office and there's much more demand, I think, for living arrangements to allow that kind of use. So without further ado, I think maybe Barry's part is the best part because he gets to show the nice pictures of the building that was proposed. And explain the apartment layout that will be developed. What we're hoping for tonight is that the board will be able to start the process for the seeker by declaring its intent to be lead agency. And we'd like, we have comments from both planner and engineer that we think we can respond to very quickly. We'd like to submit that response by June twenty-third and be on your agenda if possible for the January seventeenth, oh, sorry, July, I'm sure you could make the agenda, so.
I was just saying, you got it.
The July seventeenth, and that's all I've got to say. So Barry, if you could just show the elevation for the building and the, discuss the general layout.
Sure. Caleb, do you have those drawings that you can share out?
Yeah, if you guys don't mind.
You don't have them here, if you have them.
Caleb should be able to share a screen. Yeah, so I'm going to share the elevation real quick.
Okay.
You don't have them in your secret layer, Barry?
If I did, I'd have to kill you. Okay, so I think you've all seen this drawing previously. But this, um, this theme has, you know, the has been conceptualized over five years ago, when we, when we started laying out this project. And as George mentioned. The I made an oversight and did not realize that there was, if I remember the number right, it's eight hundred square foot size minimum in the village of Woodbury zoning code that's required. So we had had in our initial layout several apartments that were appropriate at the time that that had one bedroom and were sub eight hundred square feet in size. And of course, again, as George mentioned, times are changing. I'm involved in several large-scale multi-residential development projects in Orange County and in Sullivan County. And the majority of the developers are stressing the need for swing spaces. We can call them maybe bedrooms, maybe offices, dens, whatever the room is. But, you know, it it's, it's become a demand now with the anticipation of a lot of people working remotely. And this owner included, this developer included, is feeling that he needs to offer that space to be competitive in the market. So combining that with the eight hundred square foot minimum discovery, I redesigned some of the units, the one-bedroom units that you initially saw to be two-bedroom units now. And they all meet the minimum size, each one of the units now is somewhere between nine hundred eighty-five and almost thirteen hundred square feet, so they're generous units. They'll all have a assortment of amenities, water, you know. Lots of closets, multiple bathrooms, each unit has a step-out deck from its living room. And we'll get more into that as as time goes on, but the redesign did not significantly affect that elevation that Caleb first showed. The only thing that really happened, and you can look at this plan to see it, the plan is on the screen. So let's, let's just, to be able to refer to the building, let's say the building is in a U shape. The two ends of the U's were slightly extended to create just enough space to get the the one-bedroom units, there were six one-bedroom units on a floor, and now they are all two-bedroom units. So that got extended slightly. Coincidentally, that footprint was presented to you as the ninety-six unit plan. So we, the the building has not enlarged beyond anything that you know, should be familiar to everybody and does not significantly change that elevation. Matter of fact, almost factually, that elevation, that two-dimensional elevation would hardly change. Other than window and door locations, you wouldn't even notice the difference in the in the floor plan in that elevation. So that elevation, you know, for the sake of our discussion is still valid, it still shows the general theme of the building. And of course, I'll I'll prepare a revised elevation as as the project progresses.
So there's two bathrooms in each one?
I'm going to say yes. Yes, yes. No, no, I would say there is a unit that only has one, yeah, no, not in each one, some of them, I think, unit. I'm calling unit F, the ones that are near the entry. Currently only have one, one bathroom. One shared bathroom.
And what about washers and dryers?
They will have washers and dryers, they're placeholders now for basically utility spaces, and you'll see some of these are just large unassigned boxes in the apartments. Those will be for washer dryer and or hot water heaters for each unit. And and every apartment is also obviously ADA accessible. The building has an elevator. It's a e- 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 every unit is fully accessible.
So it'd be three floors of two, two-bedroom apartments?
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to have a general understanding of the, you know, building content at this point.
And would there be like, like shared, like game activity, meeting, party room or anything like that?
Yeah, if you take a look at that, I don't know if Caleb can get that floor plan back up, but the 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 very center, yeah, mayor, right, where he has the cursor. Each floor, you know, on the main floor, that's that's an entry lobby, will have mailboxes, a mailroom, you know, secure entrance. And it, the the elevator is conspicuously missing from that drawing, but it's right above where lounge library would be written. But each floor, each of the other floors has that space available to it.
Okay, so that'd be the only common space then?
Outside of anything that might get developed in the basement. Which will be fully subterranean with no windows.
Are there actually plans to do that, or is the basement just going to be storage and stuff like that for now?
I don't know that we've made that final decision, but probably a combination of all of that.
Are there kitchens in these units?
Sure. It's just, I wish I had the cursor, but it's a, you really just see in countertop, so Caleb, go. Did you see the entry door to the unit? Where you are, Caleb? Nope, that's a stair. Engineers, so yeah, that's right, so if you go up from there, right, anything that looks like that is kitchen cabinet. It is, these are, right, thank you. These are a, you know, fully functional, everyday apartments. These are a, you know, fully functional, everyday apartments.
Is there gonna be any kind of like super on-site or?
That I, I, that I can't answer right now.
Okay.
What about now?
Do you have? Three stairwells, is that what I'm seeing in the diagram?
Right, there's a big public stairway at the entry, you're right, and then there's a stairwell at each end that will exit directly to the exterior.
And how many apartments could exit in an emergency from each stairwell? How many would we be? Basically directing towards?
Well, they probably, I mean, and are you asking from a code question or from a practical?
Yeah, sort of like a code question and practical too.
I mean, code, so code question, you know, the stair, speaking code-wise, the stair that's in the center, though I'm sure people would. Use it to exit the building. Is not considered an egress stair, so that will not be an enclosed rated exit stair as the other ones are. So technically, half of the units go to the left and half the units go to the right. And, and the stairs are more than capable of handling that capacity. But in real life, I'm sure people are gonna use that center stair also.
Right, and of course, they wouldn't use the elevators in a fire.
Correct.
In terms of, of process for this evening. I think that the board really only needs to. Do about a thousand-foot view on the site plan because really where we're at. Is the village board of trustees has got the zoning petition. And they want the planning boards sort of review of the zoning petition and comments on that. And you will be getting a full site plan application and beginning a site plan review, but this really isn't your site plan review yet.
No, but we still do have to address issues as they may retain the secret, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, I just, just to, to, you know, sort of give you my opinion, sort of how, how detailed you might want to get.
Understood. With that, Barry, do you have anything else to add to your presentation?
No, I think that pretty much encapsulates it.
All right, Kenneth, you want anything you want to talk about with traffic? You said you realigned the driveway, moved the driveway?
Just find my mute button. Caleb, if you could pull up the site plan, thank you. Going back to probably the early conception, you know, of the project we had envisioned. Originally that, you know, a driveway would come in, you know, opposite timber trail. Recognize that there's some challenges with that, given that the four-way alignment. So as the progress, as the project had progressed, we had relocated it north of there. Adjacent to the mortgage company, which is right here, this little keyhole, you know, slot here. And essentially, the, the intersection itself operated at a level service C. Pulling out, you know, onto Route thirty-two. And we looked at trip generation in two different ways. Technically, the, the buildings fit into a certain land use, you know, category. Called senior housing attached, meaning they're, they're attached, they're apartments, as you would typically consider. At the time, John Collins had commented and suggested that we also consider. That we look at a detached version of it relative to traffic. And in that case, the detached, you know, version of it generated a little bit more traffic, but overall. You know, we were talking about twenty-two to probably thirty-six trips. In the, in the AM peak hour for the eighty-four units and, or, I'm sorry, seventeen to thirty-six trips in the morning. And twenty-two to forty-two in the afternoon, so. You know, it's less than one car a minute, it's not a significant amount. We had also discussed carrying a sidewalk, you know, out of the project to Route thirty-two and carrying it down. I'm sure you're all familiar, there is a crosswalk over here. On the south side of the intersection that connects to a sidewalk that then carries you down south into the village. DOT was, you know, concerned about, you know, kind of where the driveway was offset, but we. Did discuss with them that if the timber trail intersection wherever. Signalized that we would look to modify our site. And I will clean this up so we can see better here. Modify it so that we could bring our driveway down and tee into that if necessary. So we've kind of preserved that, you know, as part of these plans. Relative to parking. We've kind of looked at that extensively. The, the project meets, you know, what's required by code. But we had also recognized that it's senior housing and not everybody's gonna own a car. And looking at senior housing parking demands for eighty-four units. We're looking at between, you know, fifty and sixty vehicles being parked here. So again, at the time, John Collins had suggested that we. Build enough parking for the first building. And as that is sold and occupied, we monitor that. And if we find that the parking available for one of those buildings meeting code. Is sufficient to handle the future building two, then maybe we don't build any more parking, maybe we landbank it. It's there available, you know, if, if there's ever a demand for it. So overall, that pretty much summarizes where we are with traffic.
Thank you, I don't think. Does anybody from the village board have questions for Kenneth?
And the planning board, no.
Sorry.
I have a question. Has the DOT commented about the traffic signal at this point or, or they're just still analyzing it?
No, they, they have commented on it. That goes back to some of our comment response from two thousand eighteen. We had provided some information back to them and responded to their comments with a detailed signal warrant, you know, analysis. And then following that, we had some more responses to them in November of two thousand eighteen. And then that's where the project shifted gears. It moved into bumping up to ninety-six units. But I don't believe the ninety-six units was ever formally reviewed by them because it just didn't make it that far, you know, in the process.
As far as the crosswalk. I know it's very difficult to cross Route thirty-two, especially during rush hour and. Ordinarily, cars really don't, don't pay too much attention for people waiting at the sidewalk to cross. You cross really when the, you know, the road is totally clear. Is there a way we can overcome some of these problems? I mean, the sidewalk is on the other side, correct?
Yes. O- o- on this map, it is, it is up here. And, you know, obviously, our, our site is over here, and then there's a crosswalk. You know, right about, you know, it's, it's in the field, it's, it's on the road straight, not, not what I'm drawing, but. So that's where that is. So yes, there, there are different treatments that you can do to enhance, you know, pedestrian crossing. And I'll note that the sidewalk also continues all the way up Route thirty-two, you know, through here. So, you know, one of those methods are essentially flashing beacons. You, you know, it's improved signing. You know, and then the flashing beacons are where you push a little button and, and flashing yellow lights. Come on to let drivers know that there's a pedestrian there waiting to cross.
Where, where would that be located, on a sign or?
Yeah, it's, it's on, usually it's on a pole that is about the same size as a standard pedestrian pole. So it's about, you know, three inches in diameter. It goes up, you know, probably about ten to twelve feet. Unless you have it hooked up to power, usually there's a little solar panel, you know, like a two-by-two panel on the top to, you know, recharge the batteries for those.
You know, a lot of communities have caution lights, flashing lights at intersections and so forth. I don't, I don't think there's any, anymore, Woodbury, one time, Strata Road had that. Is there any possibility of having a caution light or set totally up to the DOT?
It would be up to the DOT and it would be partially up to. The, the accident findings there and I'm trying to look and see if I, we did look at accidents. I'll see if I can put my hands on them quickly. At that timber trail intersection, there were four accidents over the time that we had looked at, at that location. So it may not necessarily warrant a flashing beacon, you know, kind of traffic signal for that. But DOT would have to look into that and see if they feel that something is necessary there.
The, the pedestrian activated flashing beacons are in, are used a lot in Rockland County and areas further south in the state. And there are some near my home that I use almost every day when I go walk to the store. And the motorists, even the most rudest ones respond when the, when there's those flashing yellow lights. It does seem to work. And I was very happy when they put those up because it was very hard for me to cross to go to CVS where I live. Until they set, set those up.
Must have a good planning board up there then. Sorry, Rob, any other questions, Rob?
No.
All right, Natalie, I know you have a few items. In your memo that we probably want to go over. Natalie? She can't find the mute button.
I, I know, I always do that because, well, it is what it is, but, yeah, so I won't go over all the history, right, with this application. But this was referred to you by the village board. You know, they're here for you to review the petition that was submitted as well as to advance seeker. There, the previous application was withdrawn, so you're gonna look at this, you know, as if seeker is kind of a new. But understanding that certain issues have been reviewed and are unchanged from the prior action on the eighty-four unit proposal. There have been certain changes to the code and obviously to the application and George Lithgow mentioned some of those since your prior seeker review. So I just kind of want to hone in some of those issues, hone in on some of those issues. One of them is the wetland disturbance. The other is the institution of the water quality protection overlay, access to the site, the building locations. And there is an increase in the projected water and sewer demands. With respect to the water quality protection overlay, I have reviewed the mapping. There are two water bodies that are regulated under that overlay district, but they are just outside of the applicant's property. Our review shows that they're not within the hundred-foot buffer there. However, the applicant should confirm compliance with the regulated, regulated activities in the overlay district. And they're specified in three-ten, thirty-one, four-E. And it includes storage requirements for salt, fertilizers, petroleum products and, and other things that might be needed for the operation of the site. So it's something that we'll look for from the applicant. As further described in the memo that we submitted, there are two wetland areas on the applicant's property. These are regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers and we think that these need to be delineated and the boundaries confirmed by the Army Corps. And that's happens per their typical practice with the jurisdictional determination. Since the start of this application, the boundaries of the wetlands have changed on the plan, so I think that's important, obviously, to disturb, to understand the disturbance that's required for construction of the project. But also how it affects not, or the net lot area calculations. And then in addition to the Army Corps' requirements, these wetlands are regulated by your code under the freshwater wetland section. So the applicant will need to apply for a permit before the planning board for that. As I stated before, there is an increase in the projected water and sewer demand. It's approximately two thousand seven hundred gallons per day. We've asked for some clarifying information on those calculations. Also, back to the wetlands issue. Something that I think that the applicant should demonstrate is that there's no alternatives that could be proposed, you know, to minimize the disturbance or eliminate it altogether. And then I wanted, I would also requested confirmation that the wetland that's towards the south of the property and it borders lot two. Won't be disturbed, I know previously there were some grading activities that were going to be necessary in that area. It's not shown on the plan now and I understand that the access has changed, so it may have eliminated that, but it should be confirmed. And then obviously, the area of disturbance calculated. One of the notes on the sewer and something that Mr. Lithgow talked about was the improvements to the timber ridge development. So confirmation of those improvements is required, you know, and something that we'll work with the water and sewer department on. And that the applicant should be aware of too, is that, that those lines will need to be televised and, or televised, televised. And the improvements confirmed. So otherwise, I think a lot of our comments were, you know, kind of straightforward for the village board to consider, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Caleb Pavelski from Peter's Acton Fall Engineering. I would just like to provide a little bit of additional information with some of your notes. With regards to the wetlands, in early two thousand nineteen, we did have prepared a wetland delineation map. In coordination with North Country Ecological Services. And we had submitted the plans to the Army Corps in hopes of gaining a jurisdictional letter. As of yet, we haven't heard back from North Country or not North Country, Army Corps, I know, has been very backed up this time period. Just in dealing with similar projects on trying to get JD letters. We can continue to push them to receive that JD letter, but that is something that we have, you know, worked on. That delineation was relatively recent. With regards to the, just the layout of the site in terms of laying out the pond and, you know, having the wetland disturbance. We feel that. In moving the building layouts to more accommodate what the board had wanted relative from. What was originally proposed in the two thousand eighteen petition, kind of restricted our space from where we could put a pond. Initially, we had had the pond in this area right here near the southern property line. Along here where the parking bump that is, this wasn't feasible, so we tried to minimize the disturbance as little as possible in order to just put the maintenance access drive across. And in addition, the, I know there was some questions about the water and sewer calculations. In terms of the amount of flow. We had based our calculations off of a similar project. Senior, it's a senior housing project over in New Windsor, somewhat of similar size. And they had required meter readings and we had pulled the meter readings, the meter readings had come out to approximately forty-five gallons per day per bedroom. So we had felt that we had used a conservative estimate of seventy-five gallons per day per bedroom in response. When calculating those, those flows.
Caleb, I think in our memo, we have some questions about that data that you received and sort of. How that senior housing complex operates, you know, does each unit have a kitchen and their own laundry facilities? So some of those questions, if you could answer with a future revision, we'd appreciate that. And then as far as the wetlands disturbance. I don't know if the soils would permit it, but have you considered an underground infiltration system underneath one of the parking areas? That would avoid you having to construct a pond necessarily? That's something just to consider and then if that crossing of the wetlands is proposed or required. You know, I would be curious whether or not you've considered just the flow through from, from either side of the wetlands and how that would be designed and constructed. So some additional details, I think that just need to be flushed out.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, we'll look into potentials for horse pavement or infiltration into the pavement. One concern just I have when reviewing the project is when you have a project like this where there are a lot of wetlands on site. It typically indicates that the soils are poor for drainage. But that is absolutely something that we're going to look at once we get into the design phase.
Natalie, I have a question for you, the area that they're putting or suggestion that the potential stormwater pond going is a FEMA flood zone. Can you put a stormwater pond? Where FEMA has it as a flood map, it seems kind of. It seems kind of, you're putting water where water is.
Water is supposed to be.
It's, I think they've actually delineated the boundary of the flood plain. I think it's that dashed line there, but I think that's something that the applicant should confirm. And, and again, I think, you know, it would be helpful, I understand it's early in the process, but to have that SWIP, you know, confirming the size of the pond and, and, and what would be needed to really construct that and have an operational site that's going to confirm that there aren't going to be any impacts for flooding on the adjacent properties and the upstream properties and all that, so.
Well, it's not going to be a concern on the secret too, that we need to review that, that putting a flood retention or a water retention pond in a flood zone isn't going to.
Exacerbate any flooding.
Yeah, because I know from residents that live in the, in the trailer of the mobile home park, there are during flooding issues during periods of heavy rain. That area does go get under some water. And I think we actually have pictures of that happening down there. And that's not too far off from where they want to put the stormwater retention pond.
I would just like to confirm as Natalie says is correct, it is the where we have the potential location for the stormwater pond, it is outside the limit of floodplain elevation. It's, it's relatively close, you know, where we just have that potential location, but it is outside.
And I think what, what the SWIP will help to do is ensure that any runoff that's generated from the site is attenuated on the site in this proposed facility or something other. So again, I think that's important, you know, in review of seeker and this application. And I don't think previously, if I'm not mistaken, I don't necessarily know that that was provided yet.
And no, SWIP has not been prepared for this project.
Hold on, can I, I want to. I, I want to share my, and I know this is something we're going to talk about more on the secret, but.
I can, I can stop sharing my screen.
I don't know, according to this map, maybe it'd be best if we overlaid the two maps on top of each other or maybe delineated this, but that stormwater retention pond looks awfully close, if not in their flood elevation.
It's not showing up on the screen sharing, Chris.
Oh, yeah, we're looking at your email.
Oh, good. How's that, how's that working out?
You need to answer this one.
They're all for me.
Sorry, one of those nights. How about that? Any better?
Yes, we see it now.
Oh, hold on, now I just took it away, didn't I?
Yes.
It's getting late, we're all getting punchy. So is there a way you can superimpose this map over your map or fill out those lines a little better?
We could pull that, uh, yeah, we can pull that confirm. We can throw on the official FEMA flooding permits onto the map if need be.
Yeah.
And the, the, the other thing that's tricky about that, Chris, is that the, the placement of the edges of the zones is related to heights. And their topographic information on the site plan might be at a finer scale and more accurate than the, the countywide map that you've got up. So what really determines whether you're in or out is the actual height of the spot. If they say that it's going to, that the base flood elevation is four sixty-seven and his pond site is at four seventy, it's definitely out, even though it looks like it might be in on the, on the flood map, really with the, with the measured, pre-measured projected flood heights.
Understood.
And just one more thing to that point is the village has a code section on floodplain development. So if there is any impact there, you should review that as well.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
Natalie, in your report, I think it was your report, not Jonathan's. There was concern about just building one unit first to see how that goes and then building the second one would possibly that it may not work. Is that in yours, Natalie?
I think that may have been Jonathan.
I didn't say that.
Let me see.
There was some sort of concern over that.
I think it's.
Yeah, I, I.
I like that approach. I know they did it in Cornwall. They built one unit, filled it all out, and then when there was demand, they built a second unit out.
If I remember reading correctly in the part three narrative, I'm just trying to quickly see if I did say that in my memo. But I remember them see or if, as, as the phasing was proposed, I think phase one was going to include the first building with all of the infrastructure improvements and the stormwater management facilities. And then I think phase two was going to be the second building. And then if, you know, the parking was warranted, then they would build that out. And in general, I think that is, you know, the proper way to do it. In my opinion, but if you had something more specific that you had a question about, be happy to.
Perhaps I misinterpreted, but is there a study to show that there is actually a need in, in Woodbury for senior apartments of this nature? I mean, is there something concrete that we can look at?
Yes, there is a study which I can provide you that was done recently, it was done with the original approval or the original proposal. And then it was updated recently and it shows there is a need. I, I just want to mention one thing about the phasing. That was originally developed because there was some concern about whether or not there's actually a need. And the applicant agreed that it would proceed with construction of one building as it leased up. And when that building was leased up to, I think, eighty percent, you could start construction on the second. And that was basically to ensure the village that there was going to be an actual need for these apartments. So that's what originally gave rise to the basic. But as it was pointed out, it does allow an opportunity to evaluate the actual parking requirement and conform the parking for the second building to make sure that we're actually putting in something that's necessary, not just the code required. But we will, I'll send you the study.
Thank you.
Robert, in addition to the study, the actual code makes a finding in that regard and says, under three, ten, thirty-six, A one, there is a need in the village of Woodbury for housing located and designated to meet the special needs and habits of senior citizens.
Rick, would this be under twenty percent has, has to be rentals for low income people? Like with the housing developments, which we talked about with Harriman Gardens one time?
I'd had to review the code. I don't believe so, but I'd have to look at it more carefully. I did not look at it for that, that reason.
But, yeah, section thirty-six does not have any income restriction. It does have a preference scheme though. And the preference would be primarily to village residents first, employees of the village. And then it goes through, I think, residents of surrounding towns, residents of Orange County and whoever's left over.
Yeah, there are no, no income ish, income guidelines in section thirty-six of my review. I could add in, in, in my report without duplicating any of Natalie's comments. In my report of May twenty-seventh, I just noted in, in comments, one F and, and G, some technical issues with the, with the display of the bulk requirements and notes and on the table. And in the parking requirements, I noticed in that you didn't include parking for staff that, that happens to be asked for in the code. You probably do have enough parking, but nonetheless, the, the parking requirement calculations for, should include that staff parking. When I was reviewing the mapping for where the, exactly the new SH zone would, would be located, I noticed some small confusion about the slivers that go over to lot one oh three. You had one map that sort of lined up the SH zone with the new edge of one oh three and then one that lined up with the old edge of one oh three. And that sort of needs to be nailed down. Also, there was a dotted line going through the stream course that went in the, the, the tail lot, a lot seven, the one that goes all the way down to the creek. And it was a little bit unclear. I put a question mark in my memo in that spot. Exactly what's going to be conveyed to the next lot? Is it the whole tail or, or half of it? That some of the exhibits, you know, could use some slight clarification. The subdivision plan sheet will need to show all the, the wet plants, it's the wetlands and flood plains. And I think those are the only comments that are in my memo that are, that haven't been raised by others tonight at this point.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jonathan? I know, last but not least, I know Phil is hanging on.
I'm here.
Hey, Phil.
But one of the, one of the benefits of going last is everybody's covered everything. I, I think in, you know, Ken covered all the items that we had raised previously on the application, the previous application and this. And I think there's just, you know, two items. One, you know, we recommended a, what's called an RRFB rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, which is what Ken was describing as the, at least right now, the preferred treatment by DOT of, of doing these crosswalks. As, and as Jonathan mentioned, it's push button activated and they are very effective. And we think that should be pursued. His warrant analysis demonstrated that a signal, a full signal is not warranted here. And pretty much everything else was covered. There was a, a previous comment we had. There's an emergency connection, if I remember. And I don't know if the ESOS have weighed in on that and the treatment of it. I, I don't know, Caleb, on your plan, what you're proposing for the surface of that emergency connection. And if the ESOS have reviewed that and, and had input on it.
I think currently for the emergency access drives, we just have them listed as gravel, as gravel drives. If that needs to be updated or revised, obviously that can be updated as needed.
Yeah, I think it'll be important to get the input from fire and emergency services on that connection. And I think everything else, Chris, was covered in the previous discussion, so.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Phil? Mr. Golden?
Yes, I just want to touch base on a couple of things. And one is sort of a thirty thousand foot view of this for what the board really has before it. Because in one sense, it may appear like, well, we're just getting for a report and recommendation on a local law. But as others have indicated, seeker is also implicated by this. So the, there are really two issues, one of which is that report and recommendation on the petition zone change. And with respect to that issue, among other issues that you should talk about, I really implore the board to review the code for section three, ten dash thirty-six. There's a number of things in there with respect to purpose, location and other things that are very critical to whether or not any particular project location should be designated as a senior housing. And so I think that's up to this board to make its report and recommendation on all of those issues dealing with the purpose and use that are set forth in that three, ten dash thirty-six. So I would ask people to read that, the planning board members to read that as sort of their guidepost with respect to their report and recommendation on the zone change. And then secondly is seeker. And because this is, this zone change involves a very specific project, you really need to do seeker just as if the project was before you. So you do need to go into a lot of levels of seeker that you would, just as if you had that subdivision and site plan application before you. And on that point, although it's not time to actually act on your, the subdivision site plan and special permit, we believe that it's essential that the applicant actually makes those applications because it is part of your seeker review. So we'd ask the applicant to actually make applications for subdivision, site plan and special permit because the impacts of all those have to be studied as well by this board under seeker. And other than that, I'm just suggesting that the board at this point in time, it would be appropriate for you to type the action as unlisted and agree to circulate a notice of intent to assume lead agency.
And also just to amplify what Rick said, I had went through section thirty-six, the, the standards for location and what's supposed to be near a proposed SH zone and so forth. And I, I reviewed those in, in, in item one of my comments on the zoning petition.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. So type one, right?
No, I'm listed.
Unlisted, unlisted, sorry. So I'm, I'll offer a motion to type this as an unlisted action and that we declare our intent to be lead agency.
Can we do that in one motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
You don't trust me, do you, Sandy?
Well, I just.
You can do it either way, Sandy.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
But I do have some things to say, Chris, if I could have a chance. Because actually, Rick, I'm glad you brought that up because I did go through section three, ten, thirty-six. And some of this is really disturbing to me because, you know, I read each point of the petition. And quite honestly, I feel like it was cherry picked because the petition relies heavily on the current comprehensive plan, which was actually started back in two thousand and four, I think. And the survey that, again, the petition relate, relies heavily on five hundred, five hundred and sixty people responded to it. Fifteen hundred surveys were sent out, five hundred and sixty people responded to it. Of that, half of fifty-one percent of them talked about senior housing. And their biggest, right from our comprehensive plan, it says among respondents, there was minimal interest in rental housing, minimal interest. So I don't know where this is coming from, that there was, there's such a need for this. That's number one. Number two is our code clearly says that senior housing should, should provide, should be located in the area that provides medical services and shopping. This is void of both of those. I mean, there's no grocery stores in that area. There's Jays, but that's not really considered like a, you know, a ShopRite or Walmart, anything like that. And medical facilities, there's absolutely no doctor's offices there. There's no medical facilities there. And, and if you read, you know, again, all these sections of the comprehensive plan, that was after affordability, that was the second major interest of seniors was healthcare in the area. And that's just not provided. So again, I feel like if you go, if, and I'm assuming the rest of the board has already done this as well. But if you go through this petition, just little tidbits are taken from, from the comprehensive plan. And I think if you read the whole sentence, this petition looks quite different. So that's.
I'm, I'm waiting to see, I want to see the updated survey because I know the last time one of us, that question came up too. So I want to see how the data.
Yeah, because the petition on number twelve, it says a two thousand and two senior housing survey, that's almost twenty years ago. The demographics of, of our town and village have changed. I don't think anybody could have seen this. And, and, you know, with the rate of houses being sold and turned over and seniors totally moving out of the area, I, I, I'm really questioning this.
So three points of information. One is when you look at the current study, did look at that issue.
Wait, what's the current study? That's what.
Current study that will be provided.
We don't have any of that yet.
No, you don't.
Okay.
The, it has been provided to the village board, but I guess it wasn't shared. But when you look at that, you will see a difference in the population. But when you look at that, you will see a difference in the population. It is older. And that's taken from census information. So that seems to be a fact that the board can act upon that's more recent than the study referred to.
But when you say census, not a survey, but the census.
Census. It looked at the U S Census information for the.
But that doesn't give you, that doesn't necessarily, well, I'm not going to argue that point. Okay.
No, no, I mean, all I'm saying is it will give you additional information. It will give you information that's more current. And what it does show is that there is an increased proportion of people who are eligible for the housing of this type in the village. And they are now occupying single family homes. The understanding we have from talking to realtors is there is a need for housing transitional kind of house. But that's information you can consider. Second point of information is there are doctor's offices across the street.
Those, those are not primary care doctor's offices.
Medical offices across the street. And one thing you should consider, the reason you don't have a hospital or an emergency care center in the village, you don't have that right now. So if you're requiring that there be a hospital in order for senior housing, you can have senior housing in the village. And it doesn't make sense if the village would have adopted the code. It says in order we, we want senior housing, we need senior housing. And there must be a hospital in proximity to the senior housing location in order for it to be approved.
George, I, I really think this isn't the time to go ahead and go into detail on that. I think the point that Sandy was making, not to focus on a hospital, but the point that Sandy was making is that, which was the same point I was making. The code requires that the specific location that is asking to be designated have some context to what is needed by the senior housing. That's what the code requires. And so that's what I think the board is going to expect, that you're going to try to demonstrate to them that it is appropriate in the context of what the code says. And I think that's all, all that's being raised at this point in time.
So the the next step would be for us to respond to the comments from your consultants and the issues that have been raised at the meeting, make a submission. And if we can do that by the cutoff date for your July meeting, hopefully we could be on that agenda.
I, I have to look at, I have a bunch of other stuff that's been cued prior to your application coming in. We do have the public hearings and stuff that have been scheduled. So I have to, when I sit down with Natalie in the building, I'm going to go over the agenda. I have to see. I try not to keep the board till eleven o'clock at night. So this is a rarity. So I can't make any promises to you right now.
And Chris, did, was there any other comments that you wanted to make?
No, I'm going to, I, I'm holding everything until I see the, the new information that they're going to send over.
No, I'm talking about generally with respect to this application.
Am I missing something you're fishing for?
Just the texts that we had earlier.
That's for the last application. That's for the village of Woodbury application, not?
No, you're right. You're right. My mistake.
Wow, you really threw me off, man. It's late.
I'm sorry.
All right. So you guys, George, you're good with what you need to do and then we'll wait for your submission and we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, now, now that everybody's like on edge, waiting for what I have to say here. Village of Woodbury two lot subdivision review and discuss proposed two lots of division of property located at fifteen penny lane in Highland Mills. Said properties known as village of Woodbury tax map, section two one nine dash five two one dash two. Regarding my review of this application, I consulted up board attorney as to whether it is a conflict of interest for me to do so, given that my wife is a village trustee, which is considering changing the zoning for this project. That has, he has confirmed that it is not a conflict. Conflict of interest on the village or state law, I can review this application in a fair and impartial manner. Claudia, do you need me to send that to you? So Rick, I want to, you're welcome. Ricky, I'll let, I'll let you lead this one off because this is really due to the lawsuit, so.
Right. So this is an outgrowth of, of settlement of a lawsuit of the town of Woodbury versus the village of Woodbury. And just very briefly for the record, not for the members of the planning board that are well aware of this. But in two thousand seventeen, the village and town of Woodbury agreed to a land swap of certain properties. The town transferred to the village parcels used by the highway department, whose function had been transferred from the town to the village in two thousand sixteen. Secondly, the village's Earl reservoir property would be transferred to the town that had oversight of the property as a town park. And there was another parcel of land containing a village water department pump station. All this would be transferred by deed. And it recognized that the land was previously transferred to the village by operation of law with respect to the water department parcel when the village incorporated in two thousand six. Now, the highway department parcels from the town to the village included this lot twenty, a portion of which contained the town senior center and its parking lot. It was always intended that the lot twenty transfer excluded that portion of the parcel upon which sat the senior center and the parking lot. Well, after the two thousand seventeen election, months after this was passed by both village and town boards, the town sued the village to undo the land transfers. After three years, the town agreed to withdraw its lawsuit upon terms that included an agreement that the village subdivide that portion of the highway department parcels. A point seven one acre parcel back to the town. That's what this and that was all done by a settlement agreement that was approved by the court. And that matter is now settled. And this is an outgrowth of simply following up on what has been agreed to by the port parties and ordered by the court. And that is that the present two lot subdivision by the village. When you look on the map, if somebody could bring up the map, it would be helpful. But there is two lots, a lot one and lot two. Lot, proposed lot two is that same point seven one acre parcel that's going to go to the town now. And the rest of that lot is going to stay with the village. And so the village is making its application as it's obligated to do under the so ordered court so ordered stipulation and asking for a two lot subdivision. There are times that site plans and other zoning code issues can be exempted. One municipality can exempt another, as you know, from various other applications we've had with other municipalities. But subdivision is not one of those things that can be exempted. So therefore, the village board needs to go ahead and make this application and get an approval from the planning board. And then it can file the subdivision map as required, all is required by that stipulation of settlement.
Natalie, do you have the map? I don't have it in digital for some reason.
Yeah, I'm pull, I'm trying to pull it up. I, I wanted to make sure I got the right one. One second.
This happens when you let the attorneys draw up maps.
No, this, what happened was is that this wasn't done with any attorney overlooking it, apparently.
Thank you, Natalie.
Do you see it?
No.
Okay. This was with that application packet, so.
Yeah, that's it, right there. So that's the point seven one acre parcel. All the other land, and if you go back out again, you'll see remainder of proposed lot one. That's what is the remainder of that large parcel right that you're drawing right now. That's all will remain with the village, except for that one little point seven one acre that will be deeded over and connected basically, although there's a road in between.
Well, Rick, that's my question. That road right there, where you have the cursor? The highway, or whoever has, Natalie has the cursor.
Yeah, right there.
The highway department uses that road. That's they, they traverse that road every day. So hypothetically.
Not going to happen, Sandy. I know where you're going.
Somebody gets annoyed and decides to put a roadblock up there. Now what?
Well, there's an argument to be made. First of all, it wasn't discussed in the settlement. It's not part of the settlement to exempt it. But we could try to figure out ways in which that can be accommodated. There is always an argument that in fact, that has attained the rights of a public right of way. Given how long that that roadway has been utilized by the public and maintained by the public. So even though it has not been officially dedicated, it certainly is maintained by the village, I believe. And there is an argument that it's actually a village roadway at this point in time.
Oh, they, I mean, they use it to get into their salt shed in the winter and stuff like that, so.
So I mean, that's, when I saw this, that's and I, I, I don't know really how hypothetical it is because who would have thought, you know, all these hundreds of thousands of tax dollars later that we'd be here. But if, I mean, as a planning board, can we recommend or suggest that some kind of language be inserted or amended or whatever?
You certainly, you certainly can. And then if the town doesn't like it, I guess the town could go back to court to say that the subdivision violates the stipulation of settlement.
Well, I'd rather roll the dice with that than someone getting roll the dice, meaning I'd rather put some sort of language that the village, the village highway department will always have access.
Yeah, because that, I mean, I've seen people, if, you know, well, that, that was back when town hall was being used as, you know, the old town hall was being used, but you know, if people wanted, if, if Penny Lane was backed up, they would circle around. And if the highway department gate was open and they would go around that way and out. But I know the highway department uses that roadway every single day. And I think as a protection, it's a village department. I think as a village planning board, we have to try to protect the village highway department. So I would, personally, I would like to see some kind of caveat or, or amendment or something added to, to it. Or suggestion to the village board that something be added to it, that that roadway.
Well, it's not going to be, it's not going to be any kind of suggest or anything. You have this just like you have with any other subdivision. So if you are going to condition something in your approval, it gets conditioned. If, if somebody, if the town believes that that condition violates the stipulation of settlement, I don't think it does because I think it's a public roadway. Even though it may not be officially dedicated. We can go back to court on that.
Okay. That's, that's my feeling, Robert and Chris.
I agree.
I agree with you also, Sandy. Natalie, you had a little report on this, right? Nothing?
No, nothing substantial. We had reviewed this application or this plan previously and found that it was acceptable for filing with the Orange County clerk. It was our understanding that those, you know, parcels had been defined and then accepted upon by the town and the village. So that was one thing. And just the only thing that we did request is that a closure calculation be submitted for the new parcel as part of your pending approval.
Yeah, that legend was quite hard to read because the, the property line and the proposed lot line, they use the same, the same, you know, heavy line and then three dashes. So it was kind of.
We had actually seen a cleaner copy before, but I don't want to try to find it and muddy the waters, so.
Public hearing, right, Rick?
Yes, it's required, but you have to complete seeker before you can do a subdivision, as with any subdivision approval. You can't have a public hearing before you complete seeker.
So unlisted action and a notice that would be lead agency?
Yes, you should type the action is unlisted and declare your intent to be lead agency. And there are several other involved agencies, I believe, Shippo, DEC, Corv engineers and DPW, I believe.
Okay, so we're going to have to wait to hear back from all of them. All right, so off of the motion, type this as an unlisted action that we circulated memo to declare ourselves as lead agency.
Seconded.
Seconded by Rob. Any questions? All in favor? And that's all we can do on this one tonight, right, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Oh, yeah. Jim, Natalie, you want to? The two thirty nine?
Yes, I can do that. I'll work with Maria for that.
No, we can't set the public hearing until secret is secret is completed.
Okay.
And that's it, right? Yeah, I think that's it.
Yes.
Well, anybody have anything else tonight? I know it's a long night. Thank you very much, everybody, for hanging in.
Final signing, Chris, no.
Oh, God. All right. Well, I'm goofy now. So I'll make a motion to close. All right, everybody. Thank you again. Thank you for everybody sticking with it.